Hi, I'm Lynn Gray, Chair of the Hillsborough County School Board. I want to welcome you to Hillsborough County Public Schools. We serve more than 200,000 students. That includes children in preschool through our adults in our workforce program.
Hi, I'm Dr. Stacy Han, the Board Vice Chair. Our district is the seventh largest in America, and our team is made up of more than 24,000 people working at nearly 250 sites across the county.
We are diverse and dedicated. Our board meetings are held in our board auditorium on select Tuesdays at 4:00 p.m. The best way to serve our students and our community is to involve you, the public, in what we do.
You are welcome to email or meet with any of our board members and follow our district on social media. Board meetings are covered live by Hillsborough Schools TV on Spectrum Cable Channel 635 and Frontier Cable Channel 32.
Meetings are streamed on our website at hillsbrowsschools.org. Closed captioning is provided on all broadcasts and past meetings are available in our online archives.
We are interested in what the public has to say. We'll include time for audience comments before we address our business items. Our agenda and any supporting materials can be viewed online in advance. They're posted seven days before each meeting on our website at hillsbrowsschools.org.
Our vision is preparing students for life. And that means all students, every day. Todos los estudiantes, todos los días. Thank you for your interest in education. With your help, we're making decisions that shape our communities beautifully. The emergency school board meeting of August 18th, 2021 is now called to order. Member Han, will you now lead us in a moment of silence followed by the pledge?
Thank you, Member Gray. Please bow in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. I have a motion by Member Combs and second by Member Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote when your lights are on. It's unanimous. Let the record reflect that all board members are present either in the boardroom or by remote. Board members, Superintendent Davis and staff, I've called this emergency meeting to highlight the reality that our Hillsborough County Public School District is in a public health emergency. With quarantine and isolation numbers reaching over 10,000 and actual student infections of this Delta variant reaching now over 1,400, we must act and act now. Florida now has over 15,441 COVID-19 patients, which is factually stretching our local hospital capacity to the maximum amount of ability to take in new patients. I am reminded from those statistics alone that the cost now of inaction will endanger the health and safety of our students. We are also reminded that our number one priority as school board members and our superintendent is the health and safety of all students. For the public, please understand that board members who are sitting here today, our superintendent and the entire district staff are under an executive order 21-175, which declares state and grant funds will be removed should we make masks mandatory. This is along with emergency orders 6AER-2102, which states there will be Hope Scholarship transfers for even engaging in mask-wearing conversation. And additionally, our emergency order 6AER-21-01 with new and more stringent student attendance parameters of teaching and learning during students' quarantine absence. We also recognize the recent federal government involvement will mitigate any penalty that may be implemented by the DOE if, and that is if, we proceed with changing our mask-wearing stance. At this time, we will allow for public comment, with the full knowledge that there must also be time for lengthy board discussions afterwards. Member Han will now read the board guidelines.
Thank you, Member Gray. Sorry. Thank you. As we begin this afternoon's meeting, let me quickly review the format of our school board meetings. Please silence all electronic devices. There are speakers in the room behind me that allow board members to hear the meeting upon stepping away from the dais. This meeting can be viewed with closed captioning on the live webcast, on cable TV, and on video monitors here in the auditorium. It can also be viewed with closed captioning in the online video archive.
Thank you, Member Han, excuse me, co-chair. Board members, we have scheduled this meeting to the last until 3:30 p.m. We will have at least one hour for public comment, which looks like we're going to go over, which is fine. I hope that board members will agree to that. So we may go over an hour. That will leave approximately 1.5 hours for board discussion for the One Agenda item on today's agenda. But because of the gravity of the issue and the enormous amount of public interest in the board's discussion, I will waive board discussion for a limit up to five minutes, only also to expect another round of board comments afterwards. So we'll go back into the queue. I am going to ask you to be thoughtful in your comments about the length of time you speak and to be considerate of other board members who will want to comment. I will use my duties as chair to keep the discussion civil and to keep it moving, and I will respectfully remind you to allow all board members a fair opportunity to speak. Public comment. We've allocated originally an hour, but we are now adapting to the fact we might go over an hour. The board welcomes your comments from citizens and values your input to the board. In order to provide the most comprehensive response to your comments, our staff will follow up with you and will keep our board informed about the responses. Our school board respects the public's right to speak to the board, and we appreciate you taking your time to be here. However, it is requested when you address the board that comments are not directly directed personally against board members or staff members, but rather directly at the issue. Any behavior intended to interrupt the orderly conduct of this meeting will not be allowed. Our civility policy is in place. When addressing the board, quickly state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. As a reminder of our way of work, we have allotted at least one hour, perhaps more, for public comment. Each speaker will have one minute, and I will now call up the first speakers. Please begin with Jessica Cohen, Crystal Jacobino, Cliff Gideon, Huma Kumar, followed by Dr. Rendi Sanford.
Hi, good afternoon. Just want to let you guys know that I was all hurt myself for wearing a mask, so I want to come to you with the highest amount of respect. Thank you today for allowing me to speak. I urge you to enforce masks and no longer allow an opt-out option, essentially reverting back to 2020 COVID policy. You're putting children at high risk and potentially the whole classroom is taking the brunt forth of the education when they have to now quarantine due to your inability to practice social distancing or to enforce masks. As a result of your decision, you have seen horrific number of COVID-19 cases among children, or you are the lead to blame for the overcapacity of local walk-in clinics and hospitals. Your...
Thank you.
Oh, you have 30 more seconds.
Your job is to teach, inspire, and to keep them safe. You cannot do this properly when you don't treat your system how you currently are today. I urge you to stop being reactive and be proactive for the sake of your children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And please state your name. There will be a bell or some type of bells and whistles that will indicate 30 more seconds. Crystal?
Hi, I'm Dr. Crystal Jacobino. I'm an endocrinologist and an internal medicine physician, and I'm here representing over 200 local physicians in the Tampa Bay area. We've come to ask you to put back the mask mandate. The American Academy of Pediatrics recommends that all persons in school, regardless of vaccination status, wear masks. And the CDC says that all unvaccinated people should continue to wear masks. This is especially important in buildings with poor ventilation. We're seeing breakthrough vaccinated individuals, and only 43% of individuals in Hillsborough County are vaccinated. Last year, you had a USF pediatric infectious disease group that helped shape your policy. Where are they now? I asked all of the USF physicians that I could find, and none of them said that they were asked anything about the board. You don't know about the 17-year-old prone, sedated, intubated on 100% FiO2. You don't know about the 16-year-old in the ICU on high flow.
Thank you. Next speaker. Cliff Gideon?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for letting me speak. I know that you guys have a thankless job, but I'm blessed to be here instead of being in Afghanistan where there is no rights. I'm vaccinated. My kids are 11. They go to Williams Middle School. When it gets approved, they will get vaccinated because I believe in the mRNA technology. I also have opted out with them for masks. One of my daughters has a speech problem, so therefore the mask mandate is not good for her. Now, there's 1.5 million people that live in Hillsborough County, of which 40% of eligible vaccination have not taken the vaccination. COVID is not going to go away. It's going to be here with us forever, okay? I hope not, but it is. So you have to perform, you have to have a policy of just not mask on, mask off, mask on, mask off. Let's have the opt-in function. Either that or go back to the way it was last year because they did in-school last year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Huma Kumar, and pronounced differently. Pronounce your name. I apologize.
Yes, Huma. Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me speak. I am Dr. Kumar, a pediatric hospitalist, who has been having the privilege to take care of the community and the children of Tampa Bay for over the last three years. And more importantly, I am a mother of two, one of whom just started kindergarten in our public schools at Hillsborough County. In the last week, there have been multiple students who have been positive just in his classroom and have had to be quarantined. As a physician and mother, I am here working, after working an overnight shift, to urge the board to mandate masks for all students, staff, teachers, with no opt-out option, and to mandate vaccinations to those who are eligible. In over one week, 5,000 students have had disruption to their education and have had unnecessary exposures to those students positive with coronavirus. This has a rippling effect on the children's hospitals in the area. Physicians, nurses, and all supporting staff on the front line are tired, frightened, and anxious as we are not even at our peak. Hospitals are full, and there are not enough beds for our patients.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Dr. Wendy Sanford, and then we'll start with the new round. Scott Taylor, Scott Hottenstein, Amberlin Rhodes, and then Corinne Perez. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me be here. I appreciate speaking to all of you. When I woke up this morning, I had no intention of being here. I've never been to a school board meeting before. I'm busy, as are you. My granddaughter told me there was a special meeting, so I thought, what's it about? Mandates. So I did a quick Google search, looked up to SANS mask mandate. Here's what I came up with. Executive Order 21-175. I'll read one section to you because we don't have time. "The Florida Commissioner of Education shall pursue all legal means available to ensure school districts adhere to Florida law, including but not limited to withholding state funds from noncompliance school boards violating any rules or agency action taken pursuant to Section 1 above." What does that mean? I ask you, do you have enough money to run this school district without state funding? If the answer to that is no, then this is a waste of time for all of us to be here. And your time is valuable. My time is valuable. Everyone out there available, please, please, don't waste time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Scott Taylor, Scott Hottenstein, Amberlin Rhodes, Corinne Perez, and then Bill Call. And good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Scott Taylor. I'm a parent of four children in the Hillsborough County school system. Thank you for your time. Please keep in mind that the squeakiest wheel, and there are a lot, is not always correct. I hope there are experts presenting here today, epidemiologists. We need to put our safety first. There's many parents that are not here today because they don't feel this is a safe environment during a pandemic. One of them asked me to point out that lunchtime may be one of the riskiest times and that we need to try to do something to spread our kids out. We need to put science ahead of politics and stop using our children as pawns in that battle. If you could mandate masks 100% last year, you can mandate it again this year. Pediatric admissions have skyrocketed. Positivity is over 20%. Perhaps we need to take a pause. We need to tap the brakes. Maybe take a hurricane day. Give ourselves some time to think and to figure out what our plan should be. With the number of infections that we're seeing daily, perhaps it saves a life and gives us a little bit more time to plan. It's time to listen to people that spend billions of dollars annually studying diseases. Your actions today can save lives.
Thank you. Scott, next.
I'm Scott Hottenstein. We're at the point after the iceberg struck Titanic. The captain failed to set a safe course. A disaster has occurred, and now we must rescue as many as possible. For us, that means trying to rescue our children's public education and mental health. We can't pretend everything is going to work out, and worse, have the captain order the crew to go down with the ship. We need accountability. I think it's particularly telling that 59 of 519 COVID-positive cases of employees are in the district office. We need transparency of data. It's not too hard for Orange County to put the quarantine numbers under dashboard. And for the love of our teachers, school administrators, staff, parents, and children, please do not make them work past their breaking point to make up for a decision that the superintendent bungled. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi. Hi, guys. It's good to see you again. My name is Amberlin Rhodes. I'm here to ask for a mandatory mask mandate with a medical opt-out. The Delta variant's different. We know that. It shows in the numbers. It's a thousand times more viral than the original strain, 50% more contagious than the UK variant, and the Florida numbers show it as well. We're breaking records every single day with cases and hospitalizations, averaging 21,000 new cases per day. 16,800 people are currently hospitalized in the state of Florida with COVID. And children are getting sick with Delta. It shows in the numbers as well. Over 1,900 children are hospitalized in the United States as of August 14th. Guys, we've got to protect our kids, and it's not sustainable for us to have 9,000 staff and students quarantined with over 1,800 cases in Week 1. It's just not sustainable. We can protect our kids, mask work. They protect over 95% of aerosol spread. Please, please, ask for a mandate. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Perez?
I don't have anything written, but at what point do we stop living in fear? At what point do we compromise our humanity for safety? I mean, we're looking at kids who develop by seeing each other smile, interacting, not quarantining, not wearing masks where they can't even speak or breathe properly. I mean, at what point does safety become just a complete erosion of humankind? We can't sit and be scared all the time. Fear is the currency of power, and I'm seeing that displayed very well here with these sporadic meetings, constantly jerking parents around, not giving choice. I mean, this is a power grab. This is not about sickness. Have any children died ever? Have any children died since this mask mandate?
Continue.
Thank you. You shouldn't even be speaking on my time.
You have 10 more seconds.
Enough. Fear, we can't live in fear. We have to live in love. If you listen to all these speeches, we talk about people like they're objects, not like they're human beings. Kids should not...
They deserve the right to be kids. Enough is enough.
Thank you. Bill Call, Damaris Bridges, Jackie Puliskin, Shannon Schmelzer, and James Brown. Thank you.
I am so weary with this, but as pediatric words overflow, it is evident. We are surrendering our children to a pandemic of sincere ignorance and conscientious stupidity, bowing before a governor who prioritizes donors over our kids, and an education commissioner with a financial interest in seeing us fail. I empathize with your plight, but history will not be kind if we fail to choose the counsel of doctors and nurses, holding the hands of our dying loved ones, their phones for last goodbyes, over the strident voices of those with very distorted views of science, medicine, and freedom. And as the father of two Hillsborough County students and a beautiful teacher-wife, I beg you to institute a real mask mandate with an opt-out only from a verifiable note from a licensed medical doctor. But most of all, I beg you today, have courage.
Thank you. Damaris, then Jackie, then Shannon, and then James.
Good afternoon. So what I want to talk to you about is something that probably won't be brought up by other people, the number of students in quarantines, specifically the number of students in quarantine that are going home to potential eviction notices, potential food insecurity, that are absolute safety nets provided by our public schools. Last year, we had systems in place to feed our kids that were sent home that decided to do e-learning, and we do not have those systems in place. I am very concerned about our most vulnerable population, and you should be too. And this is a direct result of not having a real, honest mask mandate with a medical opt-out. We need to be very concerned about our vulnerable children whose only safe place is our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I am a parent of two elementary-age children in our district. I cannot believe things have become so dire in our state and, but worse still, in our district, that I am receiving worried calls from out-of-state family and friends asking if the kids are safe. The answer is no. My kids and all kids in this district are not safe. The COVID protocols enacted by Superintendent Davis and approved by this board are not a responsible plan, a data-driven plan, or even a well-thought-out plan. The COVID protocols are a dereliction of your duties as elected officials and education leaders, whose paramount job is to keep children safe. Aside from the risk of serious illness and prolonged injury and death, the excessive teacher and student absences occurring will cause mass learning losses and cause undue burden on all parents. Now is the time to stand up to keep our children safe. Please mandate masks now. Respect, protect, and mask up. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon, and then James Brown?
I am both the mother of two Hillsborough County public schoolchildren and a hospital-based pediatric nurse practitioner with over 20 years' experience. I have personally witnessed the different stages the COVID-19 pandemic has had on children. In the last few weeks alone, total hospitalizations due to COVID have increased over 300%, and 25% of all the pediatric-related admissions during the entire pandemic were in July 2021. These numbers don't even take into account the children who have developed MIS-C, which is multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children secondary to COVID-19 infection. I have personally taken care of 50 of them, ranging in age from 2 to 14 years old. I work for pediatric cardiology, so the 50-plus kids I have seen have had cardiac involvement. They all spent about a week in the hospital, and although I haven't had a pediatric patient die from this, we do not know the long-term effects this will have on them. As COVID-19 infections rise exponentially in children, we fully expect an onslaught of more MIS-C kids at our hospital as we enter the 2021 school year without a mandatory mask policy. If we have learned anything over the course of the pandemic...
Thank you.
...is that kids need school. They need...
Thank you. Thank you.
More assistance.
Have your patients admitted to the ward?
Thank you. Mr. Brown, you're next, and then I'll call in the next five. And good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Dr. James Brown. I'm board-certified in internal medicine, pulmonary medicine, transplant, and critical care medicine, numerous publications in immunology, pulmonary, and COVID. And I just wanted to give a take on what we're seeing right now. This Delta variant is very different than what we've seen before. We've tripled our peak in hospitalizations. The number of intubated patients is much higher, and these are not patients that you can explain away like we could the first time around with comorbidities and obesity. I've had to sign death certificates for 38-year-old mothers, 45-year-old fathers, and the number will grow because many of these patients will not make it who I have in the ventilator right now. So for the sake of the kids, at least not to lose parents, I would encourage us to have a mask mandate. And I don't have a social media account, just want to point that out, or YouTube channel or anything else. Generally concerned, I have two kids in the school system. That's it. I don't have any more to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Stephanie Cottenbaugh, Tara Tingler, Kaylee Boyton, Kimberly Hall, Michelle Royka. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me today. We're asked to look out for one another in lots of ways that inconvenience us. We're made to drive 20 miles per hour in school zones to protect our kids. We're made to buy expensive car seats to protect our kids. We're made to put helmets on them to protect our kids. We know exactly, zero kids have been harmed by masks if they're worn properly. It's not enough for only some kids to mask because masks don't protect the wearer. Masks protect others. A sad example of a failure to protect our children is my dear friend's daughter, who wore her mask everywhere for 18 months, and it worked because everyone around her masked as well. But after just four days sitting elbow-to-elbow with unmasked students in the school, she got sick, and she has COVID, and it's really upsetting to see. Before she got sick, she even brought extra masks to school, advocating for her friends to wear masks. It's really heartbreaking watching our babies not feeling well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Respect, protect, mask up.
Thank you. Tara, Kaylee, Kimberly, and then Michelle, and good afternoon.
Hello. My name is Tara Tingler. I'm speaking as a mom of two kids in Hillsborough County Public Schools, both of whom are too young to be vaccinated. My youngest had open-heart surgery at four months old. I'm also a physician assistant and have worked in local ERs for the last 15 years. I've never seen the ER as overcrowded or overburdened as it has been this summer. Wait times of eight to 12 hours or more is not uncommon. Multiple ERs on volume bypass diverting ambulances away is a daily occurrence. Over 92% of ICU beds are full right now in Florida. I don't have to tell you that this is dangerous not just for COVID patients, but for everyone. I am asking the school board to do its job and protect our kids and the community at large, mandate masks. It really does slow down the spread of COVID, and we are drowning in the ER. We need your help. I would invite you to listen to the scientists and the public health professionals. Their only job is to keep us safe. Please do not take scientific advice from politicians or disinformation specialists who are motivated by getting votes or ratings.
Thank you. Next speaker. And let's see if we can adjust that microphone just a tad. And hello.
Hi, how are you? My name is Kaylee Boynton, and I'm a mother of five children under the age of eight. I'm also a former BSN RN, and I do have a master's degree in holistic and alternative medicine. I am here today to let you guys know that our children need to be unmasked. The reason why the hospitals are filled with people right now is because of vaccine shedding. It's because of this experimental mNRA vaccine that has absolutely no scientific data to back up this. It's tyranny. It's tyranny. I didn't write anything because, you know, I have to let my words flow out of my mouth. Our children need a choice. This is America. The fact that I even have to be out here and my five kids are in 100-degree heat standing outside right now and with my husband should send a chill up every single one of your spines. This needs to stop. We need a choice. You can even ask our governor. He's on our side, and that's all I'm going to say. Make the right decision.
Thank you. Next, Kimberly, then Michelle.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Kimberly Hall. I'm a resident of Hillsborough County in Plant City. I have a five-year-old daughter who will never step foot in a Hillsborough County school system. I plan on having many, many more babies, and none of them will ever step foot in a Hillsborough County school system. Our children are being bullied. We have a Broward County caught misleading, saying that four teachers died of COVID. There was no correction going back, saying only two teachers died of COVID. Only one wasn't vaccinated, and she was in her 50s with a pre-existing condition. We have Flagler County Middle School stopping children, middle school stopping children at the front doors, asking if you were vaccinated. If they do not comply to answer if they are vaccinated or not, they were taken into an isolation room where they had to text their parents for help. This is assault on our kids. Why are the children made to feel like they are domestic terrorist threat by the teachers and by the other students because they do not or cannot wear a mask? It's completely absurd that you guys have given these parents barely a week to go obtain a medical exemption, to make a medical appointment, to pay a copay, to then charge the insurance because they need to get a medical exemption from a mask. It's completely ridiculous.
Thank you. Next.
...mask usage and decrease in COVID numbers. Our state has taken a stand for the freedom of parents to choose what is best for their children. If you take that away, you are in effect saying to every parent here that you know what is better for our children than we do. You were elected to oversee the district regarding budget, personnel, curriculum, and day-to-day operations. You are not lawmakers or policymakers in that respect. You work for us. We are not subservient to you. If you don't have to follow the mandates of the state, then we are not obligated to follow your mandates. My child will not spend the rest of the year or another minute wearing a mask. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Sharon Graham, Frank Reyes, Boris Roger, Laura Coulter, and Megan Collins. And good afternoon.
Thank you, Madam Chair and school board members. I am Sharon Graham, a therapist, and I began my private practice here in 2012. You have a sacred obligation to protect the children and staff within your care. That is the purpose of your governance. You have a sacred obligation to make difficult and unpopular decisions, to be courageous in the face of opposition to science and corrupt leaders who are withholding taxpayer funds from our children. Stand firm. The federal government will assist us. You have a sacred obligation to uphold public health in the face of those who value their own convenience more than the lives of others. An obligation to follow research that shows this variant to be more highly transmissible and more prevalent among children than the original strain. The data are clear. Masks are effective to curb the spread of all strains of COVID-19. We are calling on you to have courage. Please require masks for all students and...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Frank, Boris, Laura, and then Megan.
Good afternoon. Frank Reyes, Hillsborough County Council, PTA President. Previously, National PTA has stated, as well as Hillsborough County Council PTA, and we concur, that reopening schools for in-person learning is vital to ensure the continuity of education for every child, particularly those who do not have access to a technology. However, health and safety must continue to be the utmost priority. To protect students, staff, and volunteers, National, State, and HCC PTA recommend that the school districts follow the CDC guidelines for COVID-19 protocols. Last year, we as a board wrote and approved a statement concerning this and max reopening. We continue to stand behind that statement, as well as what CDC's updated rules are. Due to can circulate in a highly contagious Delta variant, CDC recommends universal indoor masking by all students ages 2 and up, teachers, staff, visitors, and K-12 schools, regardless of vaccinations. Hillsborough, HCC PTA does publicly stand behind and recommend our parents and caregivers and school board make decisions based upon these rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Boris, Laura, and Megan.
All right. Before we begin, we're all in agreement that the members of this board have all executed their Florida statute 876.05 oath of office, correct? And that we are here to discuss emergency COVID measures and the teaching of these proposed doctrines, and that these measures consider the mandatory wearing mask for these, right? The box itself says that misuse of these masks can cause injury or death. So what evidence do you all have? What support, not just "we follow CDC guidelines"? What proof of the claim do you have that is science? Where is the science? If you can't produce the science, how is this not child abuse? The maxim of law states that the proof relies on he who affirms, not he who denies. Right now, the evidence, the science, and the fact denies that COVID is a threat, that COVID demands this emergency action. You haven't produced the science. You haven't produced the evidence. The Declaration Constitution are clear that private property should not be taken without just compensation. The science is just compensation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Can Laura Coulter please come up? Thank you. Thank you for being here today.
Hi, my name is Laura Coulter. I am a recent transplant here from Chicago so that I could avoid these kinds of measures which are not supported by science. So I'm just going to read quickly here. Shoot, I lost my spot. I could stand here all day and provide you with loads of science. I shouldn't have to do that because this is a virus that's over 99% survival rate. Clearly, no one actually listens to real science, but the fact is that mandates, laws, and policies are not based on science, they're based on rights. Health is a personal responsibility, not the responsibility of schools, teachers, stores, or any other public places. The burden of proof is on you. Simply stating "science shows masks work" is not actual science, which actually shows masks are harmful on a multitude of levels. The policy is mask optional. We shouldn't have to opt-out, and continuing to call these meetings obviously has nothing to do with science or health, but only about power and control. I also have a background as an advanced-practice nurse. I was a certified nurse midwife. I am a lactation consultant. I work with mothers, and I read science.
Thank you, Ms. Coulter. Megan Collins.
Hi, thank you for being here today.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm here to say that the hypocrisy of this mask versus no mask is disgusting. Why is it okay for you, the board, to remove your mask when it's hard to speak or be heard? Yet, if the opt-out's taken away, my seven-year-old's going to be expected to keep it on for six hours a day. He might get lucky to take it off for recess or PE. With all due respect, Ms. Vaughn, at the last meeting, I saw you start with your mask on and then take it off when it was your turn to speak. How do you think a small child learns, hears their teacher, or is understood when they and their teacher are masked? You have that luxury? My seven-year-old doesn't when masks are mandated. There were 20,000 people in an Alanis Morissette concert last night here in Tampa. Were they all masked? No, they weren't. Yet, if you take away our opt-out, my child will have to wear one. Do we see the irony of this? Election time's coming. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to get our next five speakers ready. Elizabeth Thomas, Wendy Olivero, Ashley Tehran, Cindy Brillhart, and Cass Miller. And good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Elizabeth Thomas, a parent. There's a rampant ideology that a cloth mask that comes on and off during the day can protect our children from the most transmittable and deadliest virus known to man. Let that sink in. There's a greater pathogen affecting us now. It's a marketing tactic called fear, uncertainty, and doubt. It's meant to influence behavior. The fear makes one doubtful, delivering up an enemy, also known as your fellow parents with a different point of view, children that choose not to mask, and teachers just trying to do their jobs. Children deserve to see each other, to smile, to socialize, and to develop. The consequences may not be evident today, but will be in the future if we don't stop these divisive measures. What damage is caused by teaching kids to be scared of their peers? There is no pattern that indicates that unmasked children are causing significant damage to adults or classmates. I implore the school district to know its role. I direct the health of my children. You educate them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Wendy, Ashley, Cindy, and Cass. But not all together. Hi.
Hi, I'm Wendy Olivero. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions based on your changing the mask mandate on the numbers that the school has quarantined. But how many of those students in our county have tested positive, not the number of quarantine? And of those students, did they have a second test? Because we know that there's a ton of false positives. Are they required to provide proof to you that they were testing positive? Because that's kind of important. The CDC says the PCR test doesn't even work anymore. Do any of these students that are supposedly positive actually have symptoms? If they don't have symptoms, then you're sending home my child because he's not masked. Is that fair, and is that right? And then we're making a mandatory for them to wear masks, but in lunch, they're unmasked and untracked and traced, and that's okay for 30 minutes to be eating and spitting and getting all over each other. It makes no sense. And those that are living in fear, if they want to wear a mask, let them wear a mask. Put on a visor, put on a second mask, but don't force our children to wear a mask if they don't want to. Your job is to educate our children, not make their health decisions.
Thank you. Next, Ashley. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Superintendent Davis and members of the board. My daughter's in fifth grade at a K-5 elementary school she has attended since kindergarten. She wants to complete her elementary years there. Last year, she did e-learning at home while her peers who attended school in person were required to wear masks there. But this year, it's like a pandemic's not even happening around us despite the staggering climbing numbers and despite the Delta variant, which has made circumstances far worse than last year. Our K-5 children cannot get the vaccine, but at the same time, you've given them no option to continue e-learning, no required social distancing, and no required masks. We need a meaningful mask mandate, at a minimum through the time they can receive the vaccine, which should just be a few months from now. History has its eyes on you. You can choose to protect our children today. Will you do that? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Cindy Brillhart and Cass Miller.
Good afternoon. My name is Cindy Brillhart. Is a mask too much to ask to help keep our children safe? Is it too much to ask to keep hospitals off bypass status or to save healthcare workers from burnout? A mask mandate that is not enforced clearly is not working, say 8,000 people currently in isolation, and only 14% of parents actually opted out. If this had been an election, the mask mandate won in a landslide. The Florida Board of Education seems overly concerned about potential harm from wearing masks, but I notice they failed to even mention in passing the harm from keeping kids out of school without educational support, the learning loss from sitting at home for days, and the hardship families may suffer from missing days at work and lost wages. But we shouldn't be surprised. None of them are educators. They seem to excel at bullying democratically-elected school boards who are trying to follow the laws that say to keep our schools safe.
Thank you.
I want you to do better. I want you to be a latuwa. I want you to be brave.
Thank you very much. Cass Miller, you're next.
I want you to be brave.
And then we'll call our next five. Hey, Cass.
Hey. The ship is going down. This is an SOS. What are you going to do? Not what DeSantis is going to do, but what are you, our elected officials, going to do? We need you, our leaders, to lead. Lead without fear. Lead without politics. Just lead. I commend you all for the precautions implemented last year by Mr. Davis and the board as these worked. We have the data. We know they worked. We are asking you to take the same precautions now to mitigate learning loss and, worse, death. This is the worst COVID has ever been, and at this rate, there will be no one left to teach our children because they will all be sick. I'm tired of hearing that this is a divisive issue because only 14% of students opted out of mask use. This means it's widely popular. 86% of families are in favor of it. If this were an election, it would be considered a landslide. Many people who agree with me cannot be here today because they are quarantined, so please keep that at the forefront of your mind. Keep our kids in school by taking the same precautions that last year. Nationally, the PTA, the largest advocating body for all children, is in line with the CDC recommendation. Thank you. Yeah.
Okey-doke. All right, Cindy Vilches, Christina Sullivan, Veronica McDonald, Shannon Toolty, and Jamie Patterson. And good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm here today as a concerned parent, not as a representative of any organizations I'm affiliated with, school boards or corporate bodies created for the purpose of implementing state legislative policy and not intended to make decisions based on sentiment. Currently, our state has given us the right to opt-out of mask use, and you are trying to override that right. The board wants masked children against the virus, which has caused less deaths in school-aged children than the flu has. CDC data shows 188 deaths in 2020 and 2021 versus 71 from COVID during that same window of time. We have never taken extreme measures to stop flu spread. Therefore, why are we doing this for COVID, which is less detrimental to children? This conflicts with U.S. Code 360-B-B-A, which requires a where-informed option to refuse. Forcing children to wear masks or any other non-FDA-approved medical product without the child's or the child's parental consent is illegal. Illegally mandating investigational medical product generates liability, and the legal liability will be on the members of this board. We ask that mask mandates remain as is, that the board respects our parental rights and doesn't try to violate state law. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Christina, Veronica, Shannon, and Jamie. Come on up. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Christina Sullivan. I have two boys in the Hillsborough County Public School System. Less than two weeks ago, this board attempted to defy an order from the governor preserving parental choice. Citing CDC recommendations, you now want to further restrict parental choice. Follow the science? If the CDC has taught us anything this past year, it's that science can be bought and paid for to manipulate data to support a certain narrative. Instead of looking at purchased science, let's look instead at common sense. Masks are effective until the moment you touch them. At the end of the day, a child has a wet, dirty rag full of bacteria from their nose, mouth, and fingers sitting on the entry point to their immune system. So is this really about public health or about control? Masks are effective until the moment you touch them. At the end of the day, a child has a wet, dirty rag full of bacteria from their nose, mouth, and fingers sitting on the entry point to their immune system. So is this really about public health or about control? Are we teaching our children to fear one another? For any children listening today, hear me well. Fear is not a virtue. I'm so sorry we have not done better for you. The loss of medical freedoms is a very slippery slope. Today, it's mandating face coverings, but tomorrow, it might be the mandate of an experimental faulty injection with an astronomical amount of immune escape and adverse reactions. A wise man once said that freedom is only one generation away from extinction, and it must be fought for. While I don't know if the board will make a noble decision today, I know there are parents here that will not bend the knee.
Thank you. Veronica, Shannon, and then Jamie. Good afternoon, Veronica.
Hello, my name is Veronica McDonald. I'd like to highlight that we are all unified in that we all want our children in school. We know this. It's the how that we differ on, with face masks or without. I'd like to point out that in order to keep our children in school and not contribute to the amount of quarantining done, which leads to learning loss among our students by stopping and starting school over and over, parents losing time from work to care for sick children, leading to businesses closing due to staff shortages, and most importantly, death or lifelong effects for our vulnerable population. We need to slow the spread of this virus. Face masks for all teachers, students, volunteers with a medical exemption from a doctor is the only way to achieve this. My mask protects you, and your mask protects me. The analogy is drunk driving. When I drink and drive, it's my choice that can hurt someone else. If I don't wear a mask and I spread COVID, the people who wear a mask or the people who didn't drink and drive can still get hurt. We must stop the drunk drivers of this district to protect all of our students. Respect, protect, mask up.
Thank you. Shannon, and then Jamie. Good afternoon.
Hi. My name is Shannon, and I have two boys that attend your schools. I'd like you to know that back in 2017, this is when this pandemic really started. Thanks to our news, and you know who you are, trying to scare everybody, scaring them to where they don't want to go out. Back in 2017, 18, I got the flu. I got it so bad, and my doctor didn't want to listen to me, that I ended up having to have emergency lung surgery on my lung. Afterwards, as I healed, the only time I had to wear a mask, the only time, was when I did hair. And that was to protect me from the hairspray, the powdered bleach, and I wasn't allowed to sand drywall until my lung was healed in six weeks. A mask does not protect you from bacteria and viruses. And as I spray hairspray, I could still taste it through my mask. Now, my husband and I both had COVID within the last month or so. I did fine.
I'm sorry, but we have to be fair to everybody. Next, we're going to go to Jamie. Okay, we're going to go ahead and have the next speaker. Thank you. Okay, so, Jamie, come on up next, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name's Jamie Patterson. I am a parent here in Hillsborough County. We are all here today because 1% of our student body has tested positive. 1%. You're creating all this commotion and division among our community over 1%. And of those students that have tested positive, we're seven days into school. That means they were all infected before school started. That means there's been 0% transmission in the schools. It's not happening at school. Instead, what's happening is our students are losing out on education. It is your job to educate our students and to provide an environment to them to be educated. It is my job to parent my children. With all due respect, after 14 years, I know what's best for my children. You don't. And for me, I choose for them to breathe. I choose for them to smile. I choose for them to see expression among their friends, to see expression among their teachers, to hear their teachers clearly. And that is my choice.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Melissa Henderson, Kevin Ordway, Jean McKnight, Melanie Jefanlonsky, and Alexandra Williams. And good afternoon, Melissa.
Good afternoon. I just am going to jump right into, this is directly from the CDC website. And this information is sharing that from March 1st, 2020, to August 21st, 2021, over the last six months, it has every age group from 0 to over 75. I clicked on deaths because that's what we're all fearful of, is our children in the hospitals and dying. That's the worst-case scenario. And when you go, when you take your cursor to the highest death rate, which is 75 plus over, 0 to 4 years of age, 0.02% death, 5 to 11 years of age, 0.00% death, 12 to 15 years of age, 0.03% death, 16 to 17 years of age, 0.05% death. We're doing all this, all this masking for a very, very small population. And I just am asking that you uphold the governor's executive order, that it be our choice.
Thank you. Kevin, you're next, and Jean, Melanie, and Alexander. And good afternoon, Mr.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Not here to bitch at you. I'm here to actually provide some possible solutions on things that you're going to think about. I'm sure you heard enough of the other. As a lot of people have said, we're not sure the people that showed up at school, whether they came to school with it or where they got it. But if I'm you, I'm worried about mitigating that regardless of where they got that. And I would point to Alachua County, which has been in the news for a lot of different reasons. But if you look at that, they started the same day we did and had a mask mandate. If you go on their COVID board, their dashboard right now, they have the same percent rate that we do right now. So I would encourage you to look at that and follow that and monitor it while we make our decisions. Of the students that are out of school right now, 85% are just quarantined. They do not have, at this point that we know of. I would suggest that we check with those kids when they come back. I don't know what's happened last year. And ask, did you get COVID? Learn about what our protocols are and if they're working. If we find 100% come back and didn't get it, then you know maybe we need to revisit the things that we're looking at from a mask mandate perspective. And again, we all know the mask, one mask, two masks, no masks. I think what we need to do is look at...
NIH Director Francis Collins, who yesterday said, "I'm going to ask you about the mask data." I don't think we have the data either side of it. I think right now, we're all doing the best we can.
Thank you. Okay, Jean, Melanie, and Alexander. Come on up, Jean. Good afternoon. Whoops, there you are.
My name is Jeanie, and my husband is a teacher. And he also takes immunosuppressive drugs. Last year, he was able to teach off-site till January and then onsite, what they call simultaneous teaching, with everybody masked. This year, he comes into school, the kids have first year, first time, 40% did not have a mask. The next day, 60% did not have a mask. Now, you can't tell me that all those parents opted out. The problem here is that we don't have, we're talking about choice. We don't have choice for the parents that want their kids masked. The teachers don't have any idea who is able, is not supposed to wear a mask or who wears the mask, and they have no way to enforce it. What we need to do, we need to not do a mandate. Let's make a mask part of the dress code. We have no problem enforcing hymns and spaghetti straps and all that good stuff, so we'll do that. And if we don't do that, just go back to what we were doing before, or we can do nothing and wait for the schools to close. Okay?
Thank you. Next, Jamie and Alexander. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm here today to speak up for our children. I'm here today to let you know our children deserve better. I'm here today to let you know our children have the right to breathe freely. Mask-wearing does not allow that. Face coverings and masks are not effective against airborne viruses. There is more harm being done when a child is required to wear a mask six to eight hours a day. Masks only provide a warm environment for bacteria to grow. Yuck. When our children wear masks, they are constantly breathing in dangerous bacteria that can make them very sick. Some say, "Well, it's better than nothing," right? Well, this approach does not work. It is actually creating more sickness. Our children deserve to breathe freely without masks. If you want your child to wear a mask, so be it. But it should be a choice, not a mandate. Stop pushing fear. I pray.
Thank you. Correct. Thank you. And Alexander, and then we'll call the next five. Alexander Williams, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm going to cut to the chase. Not only by making a mask mandate are you defying the orders of our governor, but it will, it won't work. The schools are too overcrowded. Sure, they can wear a mask all day. The second they get to lunch, take that off to eat, they're talking to their friends, bacteria flies. It, the second that they get to lunch, it won't work. Not only that, we have a vaccine. It is available for kids 12 and up. They get that vaccine if they're truly worried about the virus. And if, for kids under 12, if their parent is worried about it, they have the option to keep them home. We have virtual school. We have FLVS. That's pretty much about what I say, so, arrested there.
Thank you. Next, Janine Williams, Will McFetrich, John and Andrea Nostelli, and then Jonathan Wright and Bianca Goolsbee. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I want to talk about prevention, but not wearing a mask. Does anyone here know what happens when you lose oxygen because you're wearing something over your face? What happens to the brain? Can you answer? The sympathetic nerve response goes on. The sympathetic nerve response is our fight or flight. No blood goes to the gut where our immune system starts, and we do not get blood to the brain. We lose critical thinking. What are we doing to our children? Are we dumbing them down? Are we trying to empower them so they, one day, will take care of this country the right way? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Will McFetrich, then John, then Jonathan Wright, and then Bianca.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the time. I've never been to a public meeting. I don't have anything prepared. This probably isn't going to be very good. Honestly, I don't know how you all deal with it, but I am compelled to be here because I felt the need to do everything I possibly can to keep my child safe. She is a rising, she just started kindergarten. This is her second week. Let me tell you about what happened her first week. Her teacher quit two days in because she didn't feel safe in her classroom. They then had to deal with a substitute on her third day going forward, right? The district, from what I understand, has a mask requirement, but it's not being enforced. The teachers cannot help the kids that are actually going to school in a mask remember to wear those masks and wear those masks properly. So I mean, if we're going to have a requirement at all, it should at least be enforced for those kids who are in there with masks already. That's what happened.
Thank you. Next, John and Andrea Nostelli, Jonathan, and then Bianca.
Hello, my name is John, and this is my wife Andrea. We have two young children attending school here in Hillsborough County. Many of us have tested positive for and recovered from the virus, including my family, and now have natural immunity, just as nature provides. Three days into the school year, our immune COVID-free child was sent home to quarantine. Not only did my son feel shamed, but he knows he was discriminated against. Our daughter, on the other hand, was not sent home to quarantine with him, which makes no sense if you follow the same standards. Culture states masks work one day and not the next. Children need to inhale and exhale as they were designed. Last year, students were sent home to quarantine even though they wore masks. We have been running here and there for well over a year now, and honestly, it's hard to keep up with all the talking points. Nor should we be asked to forget how the body was designed, not to mention health, mental health, physical health, our personal children's welfare, and our God-given rights. Listen, I respect and honor the wishes of everyone here, but not if it means I'm going to have to give up my rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Jonathan, Bianca Goolsbee.
Good afternoon. My name is Jonathan Wright. I'm the father of two students in the district. Both of my children are bus riders, and needless to say, the buses have not been able to stay on schedule so far this year. I take my son to the bus stop in the morning at 7:06, and the bus has been on time once this year. On Monday, the bus did not show up by 7:26, so I decided to take my son to school and walk him to the front door. As I approached the front door, I was told by the school security officer that no walk-ups are allowed and that I could not drop my son off unless I went into the car rider line. I had to then take my son back to my car and drop him off at 7:42 in the exact same spot where I'd walked him up a few minutes earlier. At this time, my son would be considered tardy through no fault of his own. Sorry. Ms. Black, the principal, then informed me that the reason she does not allow walk-ups is because there's no crosswalks or sidewalks and that it would slow down the car rider line. She also stated that if buses are going to be late, I should just use a car line, car rider line, which I've done in the past, but due to the length of the line, I was consistently late for work. If the concern for safety is the lack of sidewalks and crosswalks, we live in a rural area and the roads to all of the bus stops do not have sidewalks.
Thank you. Thank you. Bianca Goolsbee, and then we'll call the next five. Bianca?
Good morning. So civility out there? Okay. National news has been reporting the number of cases displayed on the COVID tracker. What these news outlets don't know is that the COVID dashboard is significantly under reporting cases. Each grade levels at different school sites were quarantined due to COVID outbreaks, and we do not have enough staff to sustain this operation. Staff and children have died this school year, and last year, my coworker died covering a class. The district did nothing to honor him and for the others. Every interview, I hear comments from our superintendent regarding the MIR-13 filters when we have schools right now without AC. Every interview, I hear comments about social distancing when we had to cut staff due to underfunding and budget mismanagement. The classes are not balanced, and district leadership has the audacity to conduct walkthroughs. It is time to be transparent about the reality and stop pretending everything is fine. It's not. This district does not have the infrastructure to sustain what happened on the first week of school. I hope you have an honest conversation.
Thank you. Thank you. Sarah Edwards, Jill Paradise, Becky Flanders, Ellen, excuse me, Jackson, and then Robin Ramsey. And good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to come here and advocate for my unvaccinated young children who e-learned all last year and are desperate to be back in school. This district's failure to put in common sense mitigation into practice when we have a highly contagious strain of coronavirus that affects children and is spreading at an alarmingly high rate in our community is nothing short of negligence. Kids and parents are anxious and confused. Teachers and administrators have no tools to deal with this, and the outcome will inevitably be repeated quarantines, if not school closures, and a lot of sick families. The most egregious thing is we have the proven mitigation tools that we used last year under less dangerous circumstances. Mandatory masks, social distancing, avoiding crowds, good ventilation and air cleaning and frequent hand washing, these all work. And we also have vaccinations as another critical tool. I think we can all agree we want our kids to be happy, healthy, and safe, and we want them focusing on their learning in school with their teachers and their peers, where they will learn best. This is a public health emergency, and it's time we act like it. Let's take some measures and keep our kids safe and our schools open.
Thank you. Next, Becky, then Ellen, then Robin. Is it right, Becky Flanders? Okay, we'll go ahead and just state your name.
Hi, my name is Jill Paradise, and I have a student here in the school district. I actually had two. I'm really tired of hearing all these people that say that masks aren't necessary and that it only affects 1%.
This is the same?
I don't know if any of you have ever seen a dead child before, but I have because my daughter died, and she was not COVID, but she was 1%. Doctors didn't even tell me that that was something that could happen. And masks are known to stop the spread. It's that easy. And if it was your child, it's just, one child, we could save one child. Nobody, doctors didn't even tell me because, oh, your daughter was in the 1%. She, we never, it wasn't going to, it wasn't going to kill her. Well, I was in a hospital room. I had doctors tell me, "I'm sorry, we did everything we could." I've been with a dead child before. We can save these children, at least protect them and do the...
Bless you. Sorry. Becky, Ellen, Jackson, and then Robin Ramsey.
Now is the time to wake up from this mass hypnosis before it is too late. This is what budding fascism looks like. Slowly taking away human rights, one by one, is what the National Socialist did when they took over Germany. Even the inventor of the PCR test himself stated that it is not intended to diagnose disease and gives false positives when run over 24 cycles. Those of us who are trained in science see very clearly that there is no evidence that masking prevents the spread of disease. It is a symbol of oppression, and it is a defacement of humanity. It is holding back our children, and it is holding back our future. I urge you to wake up and question the CDC. question the CDC. They are not following science.
Thank you. Next will be Ellen Jackson, followed by Robin Ramsey, and then we'll call the next five. Good afternoon.
I have two children. I have a seven-year-old and 11-year-old. My 11-year-old has been diagnosed with ADD, and my first grader was held back last year, okay, due to the fact that he was home for virtual school. And he also would come home and have no voice. He couldn't speak because he had a mask on. His teachers cannot smile at him and reward him when he has given the right answer. Neither can my 11-year-old. They both are developmentally have a learning disability, and having a mask on constrains them from learning. They can't communicate with their teachers fully like they should be able to. It's not fair to them. It's not fair to my children. It's not fair to all of the children in this district who do not deserve to be muzzled. Our children deserve to be able to breathe freely. It's not fair. When we were children, we were able to breathe freely.
Thank you very much. Next, we're going to go to Robin Ramsey, and good afternoon, Robin.
COVID data from pre-Delta is irrelevant. This virus has changed and older information is outdated. Healthy people, even kids, are getting sick, hospitalized, and dying, and as hospitals hit capacity, quality of care decreases and the death toll rises. Students are not learning when they are sick or quarantined. If we want kids in class healthy and learning, we must require masks for everyone who is medically able to wear one. Children follow requirements to attend public school even as arbitrary as the dress code, yet wearing a mask is too much. This is illogical. We claim to value STEM subjects and the scientific method. Many students want to be future experts in STEM fields, yet we have experts in these fields right now giving clear guidelines based on countless hours of research. Then we ignore it in the face of political threats. You see the climbing numbers in school, people hospitalized, critical shortages, and death. Look where we are headed if we don't change course immediately. Listen to the CDC, listen to the experts, follow all the guidelines. Think of how this will be remembered in the future and protect our children. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Dr. Jennifer Collins, Matthew Belcher, Lisa Schaefer, Michelle Fava, and Jessica Graham, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm a scientist with a PhD and have spoken to many world-renowned epidemiologists. This today is your defining moment as a board member. No matter one's past opinion, as a scientist, we have the ability to consider new information and facts to make informed decisions, and that is likewise what you can do. The benefits of wearing a mask is clear, and now new facts of thousands in quarantine and isolation. The 86% of parents who have not opted out should have the choice to send their kids to a safe school. Because of the opt-out clause, this is not possible. When it comes to our kids' lives and education, we cannot compromise for the only 14% of parents who opted out. We have to be loud. We have to be clear in our messaging. Required masks for all. It is today that you can make this necessary decision, which will protect our children and inspire other leaders around the state and nation. Your understanding of science and ability to quickly address this before the...
Thank you very much. Thank you. Matthew Belcher, Lisa Schaefer, and good afternoon, Mr. Belcher.
Yes, good afternoon, all. Matthew Belcher. So comparing the last two months, to the January peak, we saw 38% increase in cases in Florida, but at that same comparison, it's a 55% decrease in deaths. So I just want you to consider that. There's something different about the Delta variant. Highly spreadable, yet not as successful as the previous versions. To confuse things, the hospital seems to be reporting 87% occupancy rate, yet they were at 80% on one July, sorry. That's 7% over 45 days. I don't consider that a drastic increase. Overall, my two children were quarantined, never came down sick. The two children that they were exposed to had low-grade fever and two days of minor illness. With that, the proposed mask mandate is, I think, based on lies, deception, incomplete facts, and fear mongering. Please stop teaching to the lowest common denominator.
Thank you. Lisa, then Michelle, then Jessica.
Hello, I'm Lisa Schaefer, a mom fighting to maintain my parental rights and my children's freedom. Everyone, students and teachers were masked last year, and we still received an email every week about new positive cases proving masks don't work. Using quarantine numbers does not justify creating panic in our community. 5,500 kids in quarantine, but only 553 positive cases. Quarantine is supposed to be for the sick, not the healthy. Why are schools not requiring proof of a positive COVID diagnosis? They are requiring a negative test to go back to school. How can we trust the numbers? Almost no children die from COVID. Policymakers need to start celebrating recovery from the virus, viewing natural immunity the same as societal status as the vaccinated. All of these kids have now started their new school year and have a hope and understanding that they are getting back to normal. If you take that away from them again, the numbers of already increased suicides is going to skyrocket even further. This all feels like an underhanded attempt to control people because certain people aren't getting their way. Those on this board trying to...
Your time is up. Thank you. Michelle, and then Jessica Graham, then we'll call in our next five, and good afternoon.
I'm a mother of a third grader and a first grader who have been blessed with immune systems. The fact that we're here indicates to me that you feel that every action demands a reaction. This is not your job. It is not your job to step in like Big Brother and protect us. I'm not a doctor, but I am a lawyer, and I am adept at conducting my own research, which I have done extensively on this issue. Everyone should be aware of the study done by the group of parents in Gainesville which tested their children's masks. Half of the masks were contaminated with pneumonia-causing bacteria. There have been hundreds of mass studies related to influenza transmission done over several decades. It's a well-established fact that masks do not stop viruses. In order for you to violate my rights as a parent, your action must be the least restrictive. A universal mask mandate by its definition is not narrowly tailored. It may make you feel better that you're doing something, but sometimes doing nothing takes more courage. There's no evidence to support mask mandates as a means to prevent the spread of COVID. Masks must remain optional. Do your job, let me do mine. Let parents have the right to make healthcare decisions on behalf of their children.
Thank you very much. Jessica, you'll be next. Jessica Graham. And good afternoon, Jessica.
Good afternoon. It is disappointing to me that the school board continues to push for mandatory masking when their constituents support optional masking by sending their kids to school unmasked. The real issue is the quarantine policy and excessive asymptomatic testing, which exacerbates fear mongering and contributes to inflated numbers. You make it seem like there are 10,000-plus positive cases in Hillsborough County when a huge majority of those do not have COVID or are showing symptoms. You are keeping children from school for no valid reason. Sources have confirmed you're not even asking for proof of the positive test. Also, are you researching the type of test being used when someone is tested? Did you know that the flu has killed more kids in 2018-2019 flu season than COVID in the last year and a half? During the flu, did you push for mandatory masking, quarantining, or asymptomatic testing? I'm asking you to think outside the CDC's box and come up with a better plan. Stop pushing mandatory masking and do better.
Thank you. All right, Kristin Feeley, Michelle Bellegamba, Morgan Tyler, Ari Dolgin, and Gary Dolgin. Hi.
Hello, my name is Christina Feeley. I am a community member and mother of two. My question to you is, are you at all considering the psychological, emotional, and even physical repercussions of requiring children to cover their faces all day? The scientific studies readily available do not show reduced transmission of COVID-19 by the types of masks nearly all students are wearing. Schools that did not require masks last year did not have higher rates of COVID-19 cases over the year, and students are still interacting in sports, parks, parties, and everyday life outside of school. We cannot expect a mask to eliminate this virus, and in trying to do so, we are weakening the only true weapon we have, our immune system. Only a parent knows if their child gets headaches, dizzy spells, anxiety from wearing a mask, all side effects that both my children suffered from last year. It is the parent's responsibility for every part of their child's health and overall well-being. This is my role. This is my responsibility, and this is my right. Please keep it that way and honor your decision that you've already made in making masks optional.
Thank you. Morgan, Ari, and then Gary. Did I skip one? If I did, I apologize. Oh, Michelle, I apologize. Just state your name.
Michelle Bellegamba.
Okey-dokey.
Okay, so first thing I want to just say is that this board does not have the jurisdiction to make this decision. The powers of the district's school board, 19A and B, actually says, if you go back and look, that you guys should be adopting a waiver of process policies to enable all schools to exercise maximum flexibility and notify their advisory council of processes to waive school district and state policies. So the schools should actually be making this decision. You guys should not be overriding the governor, and nor should Big Bad Joe be coming in and trying to save the day, because we are sovereign states, and that is unconstitutional. This is tyranny. You guys should be ashamed of yourselves, bowing, kowtowing down to whoever's above you that is pushing this, because it's ridiculous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Morgan, and then Ari, and then Gary.
Hello, everybody. My name is Morgan Teal, and I am a senior at Newsom High School. On my first day of school, in my AP Biology class of 39 students, mind you, only eight masks were worn, and only seven of those were worn correctly. I go home every day and hear my parents listen to the phone call telling me that multiple individuals from my school have tested positive of COVID-19 that day. Hundreds of kids have been sent home from exposure, and there's no sign of that getting better. The lack of action being taken here is dangerous. Masks need to be mandatory for everyone on campus. That includes every student, faculty, and staff member. The current system we have going with the optional mask, as long as the student has an opt-out form, is ridiculous. It should not be the job of the teacher, especially middle and high school teachers, to keep track of who out of their 150-plus students has an opt-out form, a form that shouldn't even exist for the overwhelming majority of students. Teachers are underpaid and overworked as it is, and this is an unreasonable ask for them. Teachers should be busy teaching those students, not just being their mask police. My education, as well as every single other student in this county, is being jeopardized. To the board, I urge you to mandate masks on all school campuses in the county. For everyone in attendance today, and for those being from home, respect, protect, and mask up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ari, and then Gary, and I suspect we have son and father. Hello.
Hi, my name is Ari Dolgin. I am a senior at HB Plant High School. I will be voting for the first time in 2022. I'm here today to voice my opinion on why we so desperately need mask mandates in our schools. Luckily for me, I am 17, and I'm fully vaccinated. Unfortunately, there are many students who are not yet old enough to receive the vaccine, and their only source of safety is a mask. In a time where cases, hospitalizations, and deaths from coronavirus in children are at an all-time high, you must go against the governor's order and mandate masks in all schools in the county. Do not let the governor bully you. He has no authority to cut your salaries. And to everyone outside, this tiny piece of cloth is not taking away your freedoms. It is not a symbol of tyranny. Wearing one does not make you oppressed, so grow up and stop acting like it. You are adults, not children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dolgin?
I'm Gary Dolgin, and I'm the proud father of the young man who just spoke. You know, last year, according to the Board of County Commission, there were 458 cases on average a day. Now there's 1,622. So when I hear people talking about their freedom, the question that I ask you is, what about the right of my child to not have anxiety when he goes to school that he's going to come home and infect his two grandmothers, or infect another family member who has an underlying health condition? It really is fairly simple. It's pro-safety of children. It's pro-life. It's pro-life, and the day that we start having kids die in this county is going to be a very sad day. So I ask all of you to vote for a mandate. I don't like wearing this mask. I thought I wouldn't have to wear it after I got a vaccine. I'm wearing it again. I want to take it off as soon as possible. The only way we get there is to wear masks and get vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dolgin. Next, we'll hear from Asha Mahata, Sarah Pope, Candace Endrigas, Robert Peepel, and then Bonnie Match.
Hi. Good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Asha Maita, and I'm a parent to three children aged 10 and under in Hillsborough County. I'm a proud graduate of the Florida Public School System. It took me through Stanford, Wharton, and a successful 20-year career in the Northeast. In January of this year, my husband and I fled our home in Boston and our jobs to escape the school system up there that underserved children broadly, and our children specifically. They did so by shutting down the school and neglecting the children's well-being, not just academically, socially, and medically, but also medically. One of my children was hospitalized as a result of those shutdowns. Hillsborough County has literally been a lifesaver for our family. We are grateful, but today I implore you to please mandate masking. I see no other trajectory than mask quarantines, which have already begun, and the results from my experience is that they are devastating. Today's piecemeal approach has proven itself insufficient, and I urge you to please take further action.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Sarah Pope, Candace, Robert, and then Bonnie, and good afternoon. Sorry about the heat out there. I see there's a little bit of sweating, so hopefully it's cool in here. Carry on.
Hi there, I'm Sarah Pope, and I am the parent of a child in the Hillsborough County Public School System. I think it's very important to remember that last year, Florida schools that mandated masks did not have any better outcomes than schools that did not mandate masks. What's more, the kids and the staff that are in quarantine right now are almost without exception not even sick, and they're not going to get sick during their isolation time at home. How do we know that? From last year. In my child's school, I don't know of a single child that went into quarantine that actually got sick. A positive COVID case doesn't mean anything. It doesn't mean anyone is actually ill, or they're going to get hospitalized. COVID is not a threat to our children, and the unbiased science shows this. The solution to this problem is to end the useless quarantines, the unnecessarily disrupted child's learning, and increasing their mental health issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Candace, you'll be next, and good afternoon.
We know our individual children and how they respond to mask wearing. Some children experience anxiety, panic attacks, and feelings of being unable to ask questions when wearing a mask. HB241 was effective July 1, 2021. This is the law. The coronavirus is something we have to learn to live with, and there are treatments. We want to stay focused on solutions that work rather than reactivity. The constituents of Hillsborough County want parental choice. Please know that I'm here representing a handful of other parents that can't be here due to the time that you hold your meetings in the afternoon. I have friends who are doctors and emergency room nurses, and they do not feel it is 100% necessary for children to mask. If they speak up, they will be fired. Do you hear me? If they speak up, they will be fired. We have a problem right now. It's the top-down approach. This is not the America that I learned about in school. Please, we want parental choice.
Thank you. Robert, and then Bonnie.
If you don't do what Governor Ron DeSantis wants, he has threatened to take your salaries, the superintendent's salary, and withhold state funding. What other type of person does something like that? Your standard, classic, give-me-your-lunch-money bullies. We tell our kids to stand up to bullies. We need to do that right now. Let's be honest with ourselves here. This has nothing to do with freedom, or tyranny, or oppression, or any of those other buzzwords. This is about someone trying to win an election next year. Not one person in this room, me or anyone outside, feels like wearing a mask, but we know it's something we have to do, because it's not about us, it's about our children. We shouldn't be here trying to figure out how to keep our children safe. We know what to do. We've done it before. Enough with the politics. There's plenty of time for that nonsense next year. Now it's about our kids. Instead of trying to figure out what's in it for you, ask yourselves what's in it for the kids. They are the ones supposedly benefit from this, not us. Thank you.
Thank you. Bonnie Match?
Hi, thank you for being here.
Yep, I am here just to do some basic sciencing, which we have seemed to forgot these days. One in five people in this room are asymptomatic with COVID-19 and the Delta variant. Whether you wear a mask or not, viral shed is dependent on the case and your symptoms, right? The last study that was done on masks was in 1978, and is studying the flu influenza, which they found isolation, quarantining, and wearing a mask not effective substantially at all in stopping the spread of the virus. My two-year-old daughter is suffering, and this is personal, so it's a little emotional, is behind, she can't communicate properly. She doesn't understand facial expressions. My two-year-old, she can't keep up. Everything else is caught up with her, but she is unable, because of masks, to understand basic communication, a two-year-old. Please think about what you're doing by masking people. Thank you.
Sorry, no. Johanna Vasquez?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for being here. Happy Wednesday. My name is Joanna Vasquez. And I'm new to Florida, and I am here on behalf of my two children, one being in kindergarten. She just turned five, and her first day of kindergarten was on her actual birthday, and had to sign a paper to opt out from wearing the mask. As a mother of an 11-year-old that's been also working in a previous state school system, I want to say that mandate and masks can actually take away the interpersonal skills that we have to use in our brain cells. It prevents us from breathing correctly. It actually also takes away that gift that a child has at school. Sometimes the only smile that a child sees is at school, not actually at home. We're taking that away as well. We're taking the rights of a parent to be a parent and know what's best for their child. We also are taking away the, sorry, we should mandate actually gym, more physical activity, more nutrition, vitamins, healthy, you know, meals, rather than mandating the mask.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez. Allison Jones? Thank you for being here.
Hi, my name is Allison Jones. I am a mother and grandmother of children in the Hillsborough County School. I am not here to talk about mask mandates. Governor DeSantis already cleared that up. If you force us, our children, to wear masks, your salaries will be gone. It is my choice as a parent whether I send my child to school or not in a mask. The thing I'm here today is there's 8,800 students who are quarantined from school right now, and guess what? What do the parents have to prove that their child is positive for COVID? Nothing. They have to make a phone call and say, my child is positive, and then the quarantine starts. And then what do... positive, and then the quarantine starts. And then what do I have to do as a parent to take my child back to school? I have to do a positive COVID test. And depending on who you talk to, what school, the administration you talk to, depends on what kind of test. This is ridiculous. Our children need to be in school. It is my choice as a parent for the health decisions, and it is your job as a school board to make sure that our children are educated. These administrators and teachers are not, do not know which way is up. Our students are not getting an education. They are not learning.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Jones. Barbara Mortensen, please. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
I'm a hired nurse, and I'm here on behalf of my four grandchildren who are students here. I have a preschooler, an elementary student, a middle schooler, and a high schooler. So they cover all the gamuts. I'm here to say that masking children is child abuse. A cloth-faced diaper is far more dangerous than the COVID virus is for our children. I don't know, I assume you're familiar with the study where they tested masks after a child wore them for four or five hours. They revealed bacteria that would cause pneumonia, tuberculosis, meningitis, encephalitis, Lyme disease, Legionnaires, acne, mouth ulcers, periodontal disease, strep throat, and that's just to name a few. All bacteria needs to grow is a warm, moist place. I know that as a nurse. I've done studies.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Barbara. Next, we'll have Jason, and then we'll have Letty Escalante. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'd like to address the mask issue. I believe that there's no reliable, valid evidence to suggest that masks are effective. There's a long-held standard for medical device approval. The masks fail at every level. I'm very sorry for the parents who've lost children to COVID-19. More than likely, that's from bad treatment protocols. Masking would not have helped. I think that the isolation and quarantining is insane. It needs to be addressed and fixed, I hope, at this meeting. To have over five thousand children, that's just totally nuts. And, you know, as a resident of Hillsborough County, you don't want to recall an elected official. You want your elected officials to interact with the public and listen to the public and come to an agreeable solution. Five thousand kids quarantined or isolated is insanity. That has to stop immediately. It's only a little bit more, seven thousand, nine thousand, eight thousand signatures required for a recall, so, thank you.
Thank you. Letty, you'll be next, and then we'll go to the next five. Good afternoon, Letty.
Good afternoon. I come to express my opposition to any consideration of removing the opt-out for masks in schools. COVID poses almost no risk for children. Four point two million children have tested positive for COVID, and point zero zero eight percent have died. When it comes to the flu, the CDC stated that four hundred and eighty children died of the flu during the 2018-2019 school year. These numbers show just how selfish this board is, because you are not protecting the children with these baseless requirements. You are protecting yourselves politically, and for that, you have lost all credibility.
I see.
I do not want my child targeted with negative attention from teachers and peers over the medical decisions I am reserved to make as his parent. For this reason, as well as my observations on how this board has handled themselves for the past year and a half, I have come to the conclusion that public school is off the table for my family. My child will not be attending public school, but my tax dollars still are. And because I pay for this public service, it is absolutely my business and my right as a taxpayer to--
Thank you. Next, we'll have, thank you, Ms. Escalante. And, thank you. Next will be Michelle Brunner, Scott Payne, Yekiris Canela, Dina Gogolos, we'll fix that later, and Anthony Musara. And good afternoon.
Can we start this over? Thank you.
Oh, we're good, yeah.
I come to you as a parent and a physician. As a parent, I want to plead with you to protect our children and mandate masks in school. As a physician, my training has been rooted in deep scientific evidence and facts. Today, I'll try to stick to the facts, but there will be some opinions as well. Fact, as of August 2021, the CDC recommends universal indoor masking for all students, staff, teachers, and visitors to schools. Mask-wearing is the most effective at reducing viral spread, while compliance is high. Opinion, the staff need to also wear masks in school, both to set an example to protect themselves and the students. Fact, the CDC reports that of August 2021, four hundred and twenty-three children have died from COVID-19 in the United States. Opinion, four hundred-plus children is too many deaths. No child should be a numerator. Masks should be mandated in school to prevent further disease and death. Fact, updated July 2021, the American Academy of Pediatric drug amended that everyone older the age of two wear a mask regardless of vaccination status. I'm going to go real quick to my opinion, because I know I don't have much time. The decisions we make right now shouldn't be based on evidence, science, and medicine. No child should be a numerator. Whether or not you believe in the science of masking is irrelevant, because they are proven facts. This virus is capable of causing disease and even death to your loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, Yekiris, Dina, and then Anthony. And good afternoon, Mr. Payne.
Good afternoon. I'm here in part because I sat kind of where you're sitting many years ago on Tampa City Council, and my empathy is with you for what you're having to deal with. I'm also here because I'm a father and grandfather here in Hillsborough County with kids, teaching, and students in your schools. The decision you're facing today is a pretty straightforward one. Your goal is to keep the schools open and the kids in school. And the irony is, of course, I think that's everybody's goal, on up and down the state. The disagreement is about what to do to be sure the schools stay open and the kids can stay in school. I've not heard anyone suggest that there is anything else at this time that can increase the likelihood that schools stay open and kids stay in school other than masks. Do what needs to be done. Take it on. We sometimes have to go against unjust acts of authority for the sake of our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yekiris, Dina, and then Anthony.
I remember coming here to America as a little girl from Dominican Republic. My whole family was so excited that I, Yekiris, would be going with my mother to the land of the free and the home of the brave. My favorite thing and promise about America is we wouldn't have to live in fear. While times have changed, I am now a mother myself, and it looks like the school board not only wants my daughter to be afraid, but to be forced and smothered by a mask with no choice, while our elected officials and our school board return to requiring masks being worn under the dubious circumstances. And it's also proven scientific fact that oxygen level and the brain function go hand in hand, and I would recite the Long Institute and the American Neurological Society and many others, but seem have lost that adults, that the brain of the child developing needs as much oxygen as it can, and that our children be enforced into masks and forcing possible neuro--
Thank you very much. And next will be, oh, we appreciate that. Thank you. Dina Jugor, all right, you're going to help me with that. What was that? All right. What nationality is that, by the way?
Greek.
Greek, okay. Thanks, Dina.
Hi, so I wanted to let everybody know again that the Constitution is our rights, and I don't see anywhere that says the CDC in here. It says that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers for the consent of the governed. We are a sovereign nation. We choose who is going to govern ourselves, us and the children. Okay? We do not have the efficacy of masks. I'd like to see that. Don't see it, okay? And also, the stats of the children dying is point zero 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 two. So we are telling you we want choice. We are telling you because that is our right. And furthermore, you know, this has just gotten out of hand, is how we are now dictated by a CDC New World Order government telling us, Americans, what we're going to do. This is tyranny, and we will not stand for it. The patriots have spoken here today, and we are the majority. We will vote you out, and we will do your job for you if you do not. Thank you.
All right, we're going to go to Anthony Musara, and then we'll go to the next five. And good afternoon, Anthony.
My name is Anthony Musara. I've worked in the conventional medical system in a variety of roles for over thirteen years. I've also worked in the holistic arena for a number of years, and I've been blessed to receive mentorship for some of the top holistic physicians in the world. I am a registered nurse. I'm a health coach. I served as the chair for the Research to Practice Council of the South Central Region in Indiana. I've worked in Washington State, Indiana. I've worked here in Florida. I've worked with COVID patients, and I still do today. I respect the freedoms of individuals to do what's best for them and to not have top-down instruction and demands from the CDC, which, by the way, has had a schizophrenic, hypocritical, contradictory health record. Let the parents, let the kids decide. I respect Ron DeSantis. Remember, you work for us. We don't work for you. The people have spoken.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from William Centini, Christina O'Kelly, Kent Sharp, Rachel Treday, and Arlette Farish. And good afternoon. Hi.
Good afternoon. First of all, our governor has made it an option for parents to opt out of wearing masks at schools. So right now, this meeting right here is going against our governor's orders. You should be ashamed of yourselves. I'm going to quote something from the Supreme Court. This was the ruling of the United States Supreme Court shortly after the Civil War in Ex parte Milligan, seventy-one U.S. to eighteen sixty-six, which yet stands to this day. Neither the legislature nor the executive or judicial officer may disregard the provisions of the Constitution in case of emergency. Section ninety-eight thereof, anyone who declares a suspension of constitutionally guaranteed rights and/or attempts to enforce such suspensions within the fifteen fifty independent sovereign continental United States of America is making war against the Constitution and therefore we, the people. That you violate your constitutional oath and thus--
Whoops. Yeah, Mr. Centini, we're done with the time. Thank you, though. Christina O'Kelly, Kent Sharp, and Rachel Treday, and then Arlette. And good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm actually Julie Blacker, filling in for Christina, which I know is not necessarily allowed. However, I just want to say that per the mission of the Hillsborough County Public Schools, which is to provide an education that enables each student to excel as a successful and responsible citizen, it is our responsibility to help teach them that we are showing compassion and kindness and community. We cannot teach community if we are not allowing all of our students time and the opportunity to actually be able to function in a classroom. If they are getting sick and dropping like flies, for example, my second-grade student, twenty-one kids in his class, ten kids are actually out right now quarantining, or they're COVID-positive. This is not an education that is designed and that is productive. So I think that in order to help spread community, we need to keep the masks.
Thank you. And Kent and Rachel, Arlette, come forward, and then we'll have four more speakers. And Superintendent Davis, then we're going to get into a very brief update. So let's go ahead, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Kent Sharp. I've raised five children as a single parent, and they're all very successful, four point five grade point average and such. And my youngest daughter, which is the one that's left, has an introvert issue, and these masks are really hiding her. And as I'm trying to get her out into the world, she's actually going backwards. So she's almost there, and almost a senior. We also have an issue where they said over five thousand kids have been out with the COVID. But in reality, and you all know this, it's only about two hundred. So the actual positive of the children is like two hundred. So what are we doing? These kids need to breathe. They need to grow, and they need to learn. They don't need to be hidden in the back corner somewhere. They need to see their teacher's face. They need to get the expression. That's how they learn. So it's very important for the children, of all of the children, to learn and grow. So it's really up to you guys, and the elections do have consequences.
Thank you so much. Rachel, and then Arlette. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Rachel. I'm a Hillsborough resident. I do not have any children, but I do have friends that are starting their family. And let me tell you, they are terrified at the proposition of the federal government coming in and usurping citizens' abilities to raise their families as they see fit. You do not have a right, no federal government has the right, to overcome states' rights. I have training in art history. I'm an artist. We are trained to be able to see symbols in what is going on around us and images. And I can tell you that masks are a symbol of compliance. They are symbols of submission, of suppression, of censorship, of silence, of muzzling. They are denial of humanity, of individuality, and of bodily autonomy. If kids want to wear masks in school, they can, but you do not have the right to mandate that every child should have to wear a mask. That's ridiculous. This is not about life. We know that, because we abort millions of children every year across the world, and only three hundred thirty-one children have died of COVID, according to the CDC. Twice that number die of pneumonia every year. I would like to leave you with this Bible verse, Ephesians six twelve, "For our struggle is not against flesh and blood, but against the rulers, against the authorities, against the powers of this dark world, and against the spiritual forces of evil in the heavenly realms." Thank you.
Thank you. Arlette, and Andrew Coogan, Cortland Cooper. And good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Arlette Farish, and I do have a child in the Hillsborough County Public Schools. And I just want to ask this one question to everybody. How is this a political issue? And I just want to know, how many is too many?
One child, isn't that enough? Why is everyone talking about how many and what the percentages are? I'm saying, isn't one child enough, if that one child was yours or anybody else's? Isn't one person enough? I'm from the United States military, and I have no idea how this ended up into a political, a political decision. We're trying to protect all our children, whether you're for or against. If you are either one, what is another option? Can somebody give me another option? You know, all kids do not learn well on e-learning. But that's gone now, so we can't even resort to that. So my question is, again, I will leave with this same question I started with. How many kids is too many?
Thanks, Arlette. And then we're going to go to Andrew Coogan, Cortland Cooper, Ryan McLean, oh, boy, we'll fix that one, and Matthew Midget. Good afternoon. Oh, got it. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. How does an emergency midday meeting with a one-minute cap feel like it's about the kids? Why, if our kids are, safety is your number-one priority, why does their danger seem to be directly correlate with their paychecks? It's insulting. If you had mass studies showing schoolchildren as super-spreaders, or experts detailing interaction between teachers and students is dangerous, fine. But you don't, because this isn't about the kid's health at all. It's about you. It's about protecting your feelings at the expense of the voiceless. It's about hysteria, clickbait headlines to save the media. It's about big corporations and Big Pharma clearing huge numbers while we sit and debate masks on the least affected. You're buying all of it. Masks don't stop particles. They don't, they leave bacteria behind. They cause acne. They stunt language skills. They exacerbate anxiety. It affects both English and Spanish kids. COVID deaths on children are less than point zero one, zero one percent of all deaths. So I reject the premise that healthcare changed on account of the paychecks. I reject that premise we need to, reject the premise we need to opt out back to regular society.
Thank you.
Mask up or mask out without shame.
Thank you. Cortland Cooper, please? Thank you for being here today.
Hi, my name is Cortland Cooper, and I am here asking you all to please do not make it mandatory for these kids to wear a mask in school. I have a fourteen-year-old brother in the Hillsborough County School District, and I personally have lung issues from when I had pulmonary embolism back in November of 2020 as a result of COVID-19. And it is extremely hard for me to wear a mask. I can't imagine how it is for these children to have to wear a mask all day at school. Also, for the record, children learn communication at school, not just academics, and these mask mandates make it very hard for them to communicate to one another. And so I beg of you to please halt these mandates, and if anything, please make it optional for the parents dropped out. While I'm at it, I would like to, also like to ask you to please do not change the masks at East Bay High School and Chamberlain High School. It's a part of history, so please do not cancel culture, and please make it optional for these masks.
Thank you. Next, Ryan McLean, all right, we'll fix that when you get there, and then Matthew Midget. And good, righto, I'll get to it. Hi, hi, Ryan. Good afternoon.
Thanks for your patience, everyone. I'm Ryan McElvein. My son James is a third-grader at Mitchell Elementary here in Tampa. For what it's worth, he wears glasses. They fog up a little when he wears the mask, but he deals with that, and I think he understands that these are exceptional times. In my day job, I'm a professor at the University of Tampa, where we've instituted a mask mandate for all students in indoor spaces. I just wanted to add my voice to what I hope is-- wanted to add my voice to what I hope is a chorus of voices urging you all to adopt a similar mandate for Hillsborough County Schools to help ensure the safety of my child and all the other children trying to learn here. Please do err on the side of caution. Thanks.
Thank you. Last but not least, Matthew McGate.
Midyet.
Minette.
Just for the record, it's midyet with a Y.
Is that French?
That's Tampan. It is.
Ah, see.
And that's happened since I was in second grade, so it's not your fault. I think the Y's a G. So anyway, I've heard a lot of fine patriots come up here and talk about some of the things that I was going to talk about. And I'm not going to go over that because they've talked about the dangers of masks and all the effects it has on our children. I'm going to talk about common sense. And I call them patriots because this is not a local thing. This is a worldwide thing. And this is our country. You need to connect the dots. Things aren't making sense. Why are they letting all these people through our borders in Mexico and along the southern border and without testing them for COVID and sprinkling them in the U.S.? How come Obama can have a party with no one wearing masks? Okay, so what I think is what we should all do, what the doctors told me to do. We take our vitamin C, our zinc, and our vitamin D3. We need to, I can tell you that our gym membership's up. Cancellations are down. People are healthy. I deal with 800 people a day, and no one's dying. I'm almost 60. I'm not dead. And all I do is take my therapy...
Thank you. Thank you for being very physically fit as well. It helps. Thank you. Board members, and we have a unique opportunity which we will give you very shortly. We have a five-minute or so, and this is important for our record, from the Department of Health. Superintendent Davis, would you like to lead the charge? And then I'll give it to Attorney Jim Porter to lead with the agenda item.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And I appreciate the board and everyone today, and all the speakers today being able to come and really talk about their current stance. Over the last 18 months, it hasn't been easy, especially in the arena in education. And during this time, educators and school boards have really truly leveled their heart and have been placed in really difficult positions. And we, however, we continue to lead in a coordinated effort to be able to address the safety and health of every one of our students, employees, and to protect this entire organization. So, but I understand that, and we continue to say that this didn't only happen in Hillsborough County. This has been happened and demonstrated through the leadership of boards and educators throughout the state and throughout this nation. And united, we have continued to face unprecedented times. And we have really worked to be able to be committed to collectively provide the essentials to our students, those who need us the most. Whether it be essentials for nutrition, whether it be instruction, adequate resources, emotional supports, all those elements has continued to be a part of our strategy to protect our children in so many different ways. With this said, I want to be able to thank every one of our employees. They have worked diligently through this process, and they've dedicated themselves during such a very difficult time, whether it be through our teachers, our support staff, our bus drivers, our school-based leaders, our healthy nutrition staff, our district leaders, our business partners. They've all worked in concert to be able to protect our children. But we also know that COVID-19 is a reality, one that has had tremendous impact, not only in our schools, but also in our communities. And with this said, you know, our district has taken a number of steps to make certain that we put mitigation strategies as we opened up last year in a safe, social, successful manner. And we've tried to be able to implement some of the best strategies and duplicate them that we had last year to make them a realities this year. But we, now we have and we're faced with a different variant that we're trying to interact with at a community at scale. But we also need to understand that 83,000 more, 83,000 students additional came to our school district this year than last year. So we have more than, more students that are electing brick and mortar to be able to interact with us every single day. We've done a really nice job, you know, building relationships with our local medical experts, our lean on Department of Health, TGHUSF Health, to be able to make informed decisions along the way, to be able to protect the working conditions of our adults, and most importantly, our students. With this said, you know, before we go into this, I want this community to truly understand, we understand, I understand, and this board understands, the sensitivity of where we are with COVID and how it's interacting with our community, our schools, and our hallways. As an educational leader, I spoke with many parents, many caregivers, many community members, many, you know, medical experts, many teachers, and I respect every one of their viewpoints as they differ. As you can see, many decisions that we have made have been divided. And it's unfortunate because we have to be able to stand together on behalf of children. With this said, as a parent, I struggled this personally. You know, for me being able, I have a 15-year-old that has medical conditions related to her interactions. And I know as a parent that the best place for her is to be placed in a brick and mortar situation, to be with her peers, to thrive. I wouldn't, I could not do that in the current situation that we're in a community. I placed her in Hillsborough Virtual. And I'm thankful for having that option to be able to protect her in the situation in which she's in. However, as an organizational leader, my role and responsibility, my professional responsibility through my certificate, through my code of health, or code of ethics, excuse me, is to really follow the statutory requirements before me. My job is to make sure not only that I create safety for every one of our owners, but I also value the individual rights of our parents, and I follow statutory requirements. With this said, while releasing this to my team, my recommendation remains the same as this organization, in which that we will continue to mandate masks, with the opportunity to opt out, to allow our parents to have that particular rights. We saw yesterday that Department of Education, with the Commissioner and the Board of Education, they stood really strong against the stances that two school districts took. And they were very clear about how they will hold funds, which from our organization, we cannot withstand. Talking about how they will remove officers, we need stability in this situation. How they will continue to potentially withhold salaries. How they will do forensic audits related to how money's spent, what's going on in their school district, public records request, all of that to be able to create disruption in Hillsborough County. And I can tell you, while those school districts have transitioned through that process, they own, they own the consequences and the unattended consequences on both ways. However, I would tell you that my job as a leader is to support this board. I've demonstrated that with charters, and I will do that today as well. I just want to make clear what my stance is, and I respect everyone's viewpoint in the direction in which we move from this side. I'm going to transition to Ms. Brown, who's been our conduit for our liaisons and our experts, along with Ms. Jennifer Sparano as well.
And Ms. Brown, just be notified that we, the board members must speak, and 3:30 is our deadline. Please.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'd just like to welcome some guests that we have to share some information with us this afternoon. And so via Teams, virtually, we have a few people that I'd like to recognize. We have with us Dr. Patricia Emanuel, who is with the Louis A. Barnas Endowed Chair. She's a professor and chair of Pediatrics at Marsoni College of Medicine at the University of South Florida. We have with us also Mr. Laka Abebe, who's the infection preventionist for Tampa General Hospital, along with, from the Department of Health, Hillsborough, Dr. Douglas Holt, who's the Health Director, and Mr. Michael Weiss, who's the Epidemiology Program Manager for the Department of Health, Hillsborough. We also have with us Ms. Jennifer Sparano, who's our COVID administrator, who will be sharing information today, along with Ms. Liz Tanner, who is our supervisor for emotional wellness. This afternoon, we will hear from Mr. Weiss, who will share some community and district data regarding COVID-19. We will also hear from Ms. Sparano with our protocols. And so we will make two brief presentations, and we will start with Mr. Weiss.
Okay, is everyone able to, ooh, echo? Is my screen visible?
Yes. Yeah, we're tuned in. Thanks.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hopefully, everyone can hear me all right. So my name's Mike. I'm the Epidemiology Program Manager with the Florida Department of Health here in Hillsborough County. I'm going to go through a brief review of our COVID data in Hillsborough County. Some focus will be placed on our children in schools, of course, for this group. And I did present this information to our Board of County Commissioners earlier today. So if you are, were on that as well, you may have seen the presentation. So with that, we'll go through some slides. So overall picture of COVID in Hillsborough County is represented in this top graph here. So going from March of 2020 all the way up until just last week, the average number of cases per day is the red line on this graph. The yellow dashed line represents our positivity rate in our community. The lines, the numbers on the left side are the number of cases, go with that. The right side is the positivity. And you can really see on this graph, the summer wave that we had in 2020, the winter wave in 2020 into 2021. And we were on a slow decline all the way until June. And really, right around June into July, we started this steep increase. And that's the area I've shaded and expanded on below. When you look below, you can see that we are trending upwards. We are at 1,622 cases per day in our county. A positivity is around 22%. During the pandemic, this is the highest for both of those values. This recent increase has coincided with a few things. In July, we had relaxed community mitigation measures, and we also saw the introduction of the Delta variant into our community. So these two things combined really increased the case transmission and the case rate in our, in our community. We've also added some additional testing. County testing sites have opened, so we've been identifying additional cases that way. So when we look to our pediatric population, I've adjusted this to the start of last school year at 2020. And we're using a case rate per 100,000 population so that these different age groups are comparable. In the green line, we have our preschool age, zero to four. The yellow line is our elementary age. The blue line is our middle and high school age. And the gray line represents our college age. The college age rate has, the case rate has remained higher than the others throughout the course of the pandemic. But you can really see here that the case rates in all of these followed that trend that I just presented for the overall community. We saw cases in all of these age groups increase in the winter. They slowly trended downwards towards June and July of this past year. And all three, all of the age groups here have taken off since, since July. So with these age groups, just like the community at, at large, the case rates in our college, all the way down to preschool age groups, are now at the highest case rates we've seen at any point during the pandemic. So what those case rates mean in terms of cases in our schools, at the start of the 2020 school year is in the one column, and then that's going to be compared in the other column to the start of this school year. So at the start in August of 2020, we had 458 cases per day being identified in Hillsborough County. 11 of those were in preschool age, 13 were elementary, and 24 were middle or high school. You compare that now to where we are in 2021, we have 1,622 cases per day in our county. That's a 250% increase. The increase in the preschool is 536%, up to 70 cases per day. We're at 117 in the elementary, 800% increase, and it's a 458% increase in our middle and high schools. And then when we look at specifically on our school sites, at K through 12 schools, in the beginning of 2020, August, we had 51 students that tested positive during that week and 17 staff. During the 2020, 2021 school year, at the peak of the outbreak that year, we had 340 students test positive in one week with 110 staff. That was January 10th through 16th. And again, I just want to point out that aligns with what we were seeing in the community at large, and when we saw the peak in, in these age groups as well. And so far, in this first week of August 2021, we've already identified 307 students, 57, 59 staff. And I just want to ask, state that those numbers are ongoing. We're still collecting information on last week's information. And additionally, the numbers for this week already appear to be as high, if not higher already, than the previous week of cases associated with schools. So really, the take-home point here is that the cases that are increasing in the community get reflected in our school age and then on our school campuses. Hospitalizations, I do want to make a few points about hospitalizations. Hospital visits and hospital admissions related to COVID are now both at the highest level seen at any point during our pandemic, during the entire pandemic. Hospitals are reporting twice the number of COVID patients they saw in 2020 winter peak. Pediatric hospitalizations are also increasing. They represent a small percentage of the overall COVID hospitalizations, but they are also increasing. We are seeing both admissions and emergency department visits for pediatric cases increasing. I know that they've been increasing in the last two weeks, but we also know that hospitalizations generally lag behind the case increases. So we expect the hospitalizations to continue to increase in the near future. And across all of these age groups, the hospitalizations are overwhelmingly in the unvaccinated population. Hospitals are reporting anywhere from 80 to 90% of cases are in unvaccinated individuals. I do also want to add that we have identified two COVID-related pediatric fatalities in Hillsborough County during the course of the pandemic. And then, real quickly, I'll talk about variants. The Delta variant is very much the predominant COVID strain in our county. 99% of cases recently tested in our county were the COVID Delta variant. This aligns with the U.S. 98% of cases in the U.S. are now considered Delta variant. I want to also speak briefly about breakthrough cases and what we're seeing there, as well as breakthrough deaths. The definition of a breakthrough case is in someone who is fully vaccinated, and then they get infected with the virus. And we have found that there were 1,545 Hillsborough County residents who were fully vaccinated, who tested positive for COVID since January 2021. So that sounds like a lot, but I've highlighted in blue that in that same time, we've had 107,000 unvaccinated residents that have tested positive for COVID. 97% of our cases have been unvaccinated. Additionally, when we look at our COVID-related deaths in Hillsborough County, we are at 642 that were unvaccinated to only 31 that were fully vaccinated. Furthermore, 481 of these were in individuals over 65, 161 were under the age of 65. And as I highlighted here for pediatric population, the under 65 that are fully vaccinated, we have only seen two mortalities in that age group. So again, the point here is that the majority of COVID death is still in our 65 and older population. But the best way to keep that population healthy is for everyone in the community to be vaccinated and for everyone to prevent themselves from getting the virus in the first place. So that includes vaccinating our 12, 13, 14-year-olds. So that brings me to where we stand as vaccines in our community. There's been 776,000 Hillsborough County residents that have already gotten at least one dose. That's the yellow slice of this pie here, which is great. 40% of them are fully vaccinated. Unfortunately, we have 222,000 children in this county that are too young to be vaccinated. They don't have the option at this point to receive the vaccine. We do have 500,000-plus residents who are eligible who have yet decided to get vaccinated, so they are unvaccinated at this time. When we look specifically at our 12 to 19-year-olds, those that are in schools that could get vaccinated, the 43% have at least one dose. 32% of them are fully vaccinated. And we've got 84,389 who are eligible but have yet to be vaccinated. So again, it's, we've got plenty of opportunities out in the community for that, that group to get vaccinated, and we strongly encourage our teams to go get vaccinated. This is a representation of the vaccine coverage of each age group over time, over the last six months. You can see when different age groups became eligible for the vaccine in our county. And you can really see that as soon as an age group was made eligible, we saw immediate increases in the coverage for those age groups. The highest coverage is in the bright blue line there. That's our 65 and older population, which we're now at roughly 85% have gotten at least one dose. Our youngest group, our 12 to 14-year-olds, who are the most recently eligible, are only at about 39% receiving one dose. You can see that kind of rise more recently for that age group. I know it's a little bit hard to see. You got to squint. But that really does represent some of the efforts that we've taken to try to get vaccines at back-to-school events and try to get that group vaccinated right before we went back to school. But unfortunately, the overall trend here is that the community... But unfortunately, the overall trend here is that the community is flat. Most of these age groups are, are moreover flat. We're not seeing a high levels of vaccine uptake in our community at this point. And so just another opportunity to say that we really strongly encourage everyone to get vaccinated. That's the way that our, our children are best protected. That is what I have put together for us.
Wow, thank you so much, Dr. Weiss. And at this time, I'm going to begin our agenda because we don't have that much time. So forgive me, we're going to have to have the board discussion. 10:01, emergency school board meeting to discuss the latest COVID-19 impact. And we'll discuss the best way to mitigate against the spread of the virus, up to and including mandatory face coverings for all students and staff. And again, board members, there will be a time for each of us to make discussions, which I know is very important. At this time, I want to recognize Member Combs. And Mr. Porter will be guiding all the legalities accordingly. Member Combs?
Thank you, Member Gray. I'd like to make a motion based on the latest data on the impact of COVID on Hillsborough County public schools. There is an immediate danger to the public health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, I move that we reinstate the facial covering requirement found in the district's reopening plan for the 2021 school year, previously approved by the state for all students, teachers, and staff of Hillsborough County Public Schools for 30 days, starting tomorrow, August 19th.
Okay, thank you, Member Combs. I have a motion, I need a second. I have a second from Member Washington. Board members, would you like to go ahead and have discussion at this time?
Madam Chair, if I may, before the board discusses, I think I need to set the parameters.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Porter.
And I'd also like to thank the, the speakers from Tampa General and ask them to remain online because I know some board members have questions for them. And, and I think as part of the board comments, we, we should allow the board members to ask those questions. So Ms. Brown is arranging that. Board members, and this is an emergency meeting of the board. It's different from a special called board meeting. It's being held pursuant to Florida Statute's Chapter 120 to address an immediate danger to the public health, safety, and welfare that requires immediate action. It's directly related to the numbers that were released on Monday dealing with COVID, both the number of cases and the number of quarantines in Hillsborough County. Based on that emergency, the chair called this emergency meeting so the board can address the emergency. You've heard from the health officials and you've heard from the superintendent. And you may want to consider different strategies for trying to mitigate the emergency. It's important, though, that we spend a little bit of time talking about facial coverings because that seems to be the issue that's on everyone's mind. The district currently has a policy in place that's a mandatory face covering ordinance with the parental opt-out. That is consistent with an executive order that the governor issued and also consistent with a Department of Health rule that was issued on an emergency basis. Because we allowed a parental opt-out, we're concurrently consistent with the state order. If the board decides to change that and make it more restrictive by requiring a medical opt-out, or as Member Combs suggested, going back to the policy that was in place during the last school year, there are risks involved, and I need this board to understand what those risks are before you vote to change anything.
I want to make sure that I, I do have the medical opt-out policy as well.
That's part of it, yes, yes. So Broward and Alachua County adopted similar mask mandates with the medical opt-out only. Last night, as the superintendent mentioned, the State Board of Education considered those and rejected those as being inconsistent with the, the order and the Department of Health rule. They are not taking, Broward and Alachua are taking the position that they are consistent because they're allowing an opt-out with a medical note. That would be a similar position that we would find ourselves in if the board passes Ms. Combs' motion. Understand, they rejected that argument. So they have made a motion to direct the Commissioner of Education to enforce the law up to and including withholding state funds, removing board members from office, withholding salaries of the superintendent in board meetings and, and other actions as the superintendent alluded. The law allows for the Department of Education to enforce the law and withhold state funds. But the statute that was referenced in allowing them to do that does not contemplate removing you from office or withholding salaries. Nevertheless, that was part of the motion that passed unanimously at the Board of Education. So as you debate this policy, consider that the state's position is that you would be in violation of the order if you pass the motion. Our position, if you do pass the motion, will be similar to Broward. We're not defying the order. We are complying with the order by allowing an opt-out, but with further restrictions. And I'll note that the rule passed by the Department of Health does not specifically prohibit requiring a medical note for the opt-out. But that's the position the state is taking. I'll further note that the rule was promulgated by the Health Department, not the Department of Education, who is seeking to enforce it. So the point is, there are legal, there are legal arguments we could make if you choose to pass this. But there are risks involved that I want this board to fully appreciate before you make the decision so that you're making a decision with open eyes and with all the information available to you. As the discussion progresses, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's important for you all to understand.
Yeah, there may be some questions because you covered a lot of territory. And you may want to include for full disclosure, the letter from Congresswoman Kathy Castor. There has been a letter in everyone's mailbox.
So there, as Ms. Gray alluded to, we have a letter from the Congresswoman who represents this district, Kathy Castor, who has promised help in reimbursing the district if there were penalties associated with this decision. The governor and the Commissioner of Education have also received letters from the Federal Department of Education that also promised to provide reimbursement if there were ramifications based on this vote.
Okay, so first, we're going to go to clarifications. But board members, be mindful that Ms. Brown does have a few of the experts. Should you have a medical question? And Ms. Brown, you'll remind us of who is on the call center. I'm using that word loosely. But first, let's get to the board clarifications. Mr. Porter, there may be some questions. And Member Han has a particular clarifying question.
Just, this motion, to be clear, that Member Combs made is a full mask mandate with no opt-out?
No, that would be the same opt-outs that the board had last year in the reopening plan. And staff could go over what those are. And it would also only be in effect for 30 days. The emergency rulemaking power that you have allows you to adopt a rule, for lack of a better word. It can only be effective for 90 days. Her motion is for 30 days. And it probably would be helpful for staff to explain what those exemptions would be for the opt-out.
For the record, I would like Member Combs to read the rule, last year's rule, with all the opt-out, just so it's clear what this vote today represents.
I think that'd be more appropriate coming from staff.
I want it read into the record, then.
I think it needs to be read into the record.
And as vice chair of this board, I am just saying personally, I don't see why we have to be held to a 3:30 stop. I'm willing to stay here for as long as it takes to discuss this. I would, in, out of respect for the medical experts that are here today, ask that maybe we ask our medical questions first and then move into a more lengthy discussion before we take a vote. But I in no way think that we can fully discuss and get to a vote around a decision of this magnitude in less than 15 minutes. Thank you.
As you know, Member Han, I did mention to you a few minutes ago that we will be having a longer session and that, right now, I will need consensus for that. And with the understanding, board members, that we, we will have a finite discussion eventually. And clarification on the very motion from staff. So, board members, with a nod of the head, would you go ahead and allow the board's emergency meeting to continue until 4:00 PM? Would that be, I know you have appointments, I have one as well, but if that's amenable to you.
Again, I, I think I'm willing to stay here well beyond 4:00 PM. Or I, I don't, I, I'm not comfortable with having a specific stop time. I think we need to discuss this until we're all comfortable with this vote. This is a, a very serious matter we're discussing today. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Han. Without further ado, let's go ahead and, for the record, again, we're trying to get the record built up. Mr. Porter, do we have a staff member that's going to share the requests that we've had before? As far as the...
I believe Ms. Brown will do that.
Ms. Brown, would you go ahead and...
I can, yeah, to the chair. We will definitely, we want to make sure when we get it accurate and right, right out of the document for the 2021 school year. But it was openly required that parents provide a, have a clinical provider, whether that be medical, whether it be psychological, to be able to complete a document, to be able to explain why a mask may not be beneficial for that learner. So that was available to all of our, to our parents. And so they can go to that provider and be able to obtain it. But we'll get the, the explicit information from the 2021 plan. That way, we can read it into, into the, the record for everyone to understand.
Okay, thank you. At this time, let's go ahead, board members. Do you have a medical question you'd like to ask? I, I see members, board members in the queue. Perhaps we'll start there. Each board member will talk initially, their five minutes. And then if you want to get back into the queue, inclusive are your questions. Certainly, you may do so. Again, that motion, I'd like to have that motion restated again because we want to be clear to Member Han's point. Crystal clear, what exactly does that motion imply or implicate? And, you know, that's...
So if I could speak to that. The, the motion is to, last year, you'll recall, board members, that you had a reopening plan that included a mask mandate. Within that mask mandate, there were specific exemptions. And that's what the motion is reflective of. Because last, the theory behind that is, last year, the state approved that reopening plan under different circumstances. And so the thought is that if we want to do the same thing we did last year, the state should be able to look at that with the idea that we're being consistent with what we did last year with far worse numbers. That's the theory behind it. I've asked staff to prepare and provide what that is because they're the best people to provide that. So we just need to wait for them to give us on the record.
Oh, Superintendent Davis, are we expecting the staff to share that at this time?
Yes, ma'am. That, that plan, we're trying to look it up right now to give explicit language. But I gave a brief overview. It's going to be related to what I just articulated, but we want to get the explicit language. Ready, Ms. Brown? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, ma'am.
We will prepare this and give it to Mr. Porter so that you have an actual physical document, so that you can add it to the record. But I'll go ahead and read what is on our face covering medical exemption form. It states, "The health and safety of our students and staff is our top priority. To ensure a safe environment, masks will be required for all students, staff, and visitors on Hillsborough County Public Schools property. The school district's mandate is aligned with CDC guidelines and recommendations from the Florida Department of Health. The experts agree that face coverings are one of the most effective means for preventing the spread of COVID-19. If your child has a medical, physical, or psychological condition that prevents the child from wearing a face covering, please consult with your medical provider and complete this form. The form asks for the following information: student information, as well as parent and guardian information. Student name, student number, the school, and the date. Parent and guardian, guardian information is the parent name, parent signature, contact number, and contact email. The form concludes with, "Please attach medical certification from a licensed healthcare provider that includes a description of the medical reason for the exemption. Submit this form and medical documentation to your child's school. District staff will validate all medical certifications."
Okay. Board members, there you have it. And one more time, let's get that motion repeated so we're crystal clear. Member Combs, and then we'll proceed with board discussion.
"Based on the latest data on the impact of COVID on Hillsborough County Public Schools, there is an immediate danger to the public health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, I move that we impose a mandatory facial covering requirement on all students, teachers, and staff of Hillsborough County Public Schools with an opt-out for medical reasons for 30 days, starting tomorrow, August 19th."
Okay, thank you. And, board members, I'm going to ask you again to be thoughtful about the length of time you speak, to be considerate of other board members who will want to comment. I will use my duties as chair to keep the discussion civil and to keep it moving. And I will respectfully remind each of you to allow all board members a fair opportunity to speak. And at this time, I'm going to have Member Von, Member Combs, Member Perez, and we'll see the list. Member Von?
Thank you, Member Chair. Just, Chairwoman Gray, just to clarify, are you asking me only to ask my medical questions right now? Are you asking for me to ask them first?
You can go ahead and ask the medical staff. They are right on call. So go ahead and ask those questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I'd like to understand the thoughts on mask wearing, per the medical providers. Is it the thought process that the wearer is completely protected? Is it the thought process that, that the wearer is protecting people around the wearer from the spread of the germs? What, how, where are we at as far as understanding the medical science behind mask wearing? Can you stop my time as well?
Ms. Brown, should we go to the main screen?
Hi, this is Pat Emanuel, a pediatric infectious disease physician, the chair of pediatrics at USF. And I can address that. Actually, masks protect both, both the wearer and those around them. You know, we know that cloth masks are not perfect. We know that they are a one layer. When we're in surgery or when we have a positive COVID patient in the hospital, we're using the highest level mask, the N95. But they do prevent the transmission of large droplets when the child is, you know, sneezing, coughing. And so they protect others. But then they also prevent that child from inhaling other droplets. So, and from really touching, you know, touching their mouth, et cetera. So I, I think there's a rationale both for the wearer and for protection of others.
Thank you. And as medical professionals, to optimize the most amount of safety and to contain the spread, do you recommend just one person who wants to protect themselves wearing the mask? Or do you recommend that everyone wear the mask to make sure that we mitigate the spread?
So I, I just want to make a comment that we are in a different place right now with the Delta variant. And I think you clearly saw that by the data that was just presented by the Department of Health. And our hospitals are very stretched. And I think you heard that in some of the emotional testimony. So this is a different variant. And I, I think that the only way to stop this is, number one, get vaccinated. But number two, we, we have to do everything possible. And right now, one of the only things we can do to protect children is to have everyone wear masks inside. And this may not be, I can ask our public health colleagues to speak. This may not be a long term. The Delta variant, as you may have heard, has come and gone in other locations. But at this moment, we are in a very serious situation.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I was also curious, I know that the gentleman said that we had two pediatric deaths. Have there been any pediatric deaths reported in the last, like, since school has opened? And does the public have, have access to that information?
I will let the Department of Health answer also. I am not aware of specifically any pediatric deaths in the last two weeks. We do have more patients in the hospital than previous, but I'm not aware of any deaths.
Does the Department of Health want to answer that?
Yeah, I got it.
Do we still have the Department of Health connection?
Hey, sorry, yes, this is Mike with the Florida Department of Health. So the Department of Health is summarizing its overall death data as part of its weekly data. So unfortunately, I, I can't go into the, the state level or the local level specifics about individual deaths at this point. So I apologize for not being able to provide more specifics at this time. But we have to date, two under the age of 18 deaths in our county.
Thank you. And the last question I would have is, aside from the mask wearing and from vaccinations, are there any other things that can be done within our schools? Do we, is there a recommendation that access to testing helps mitigate, you know, the spread so that people can identify themselves? Is there incentives to get vaccines? Are there other things? other things that, you know, medically, there's recommendations within other county districts or schools that can help mitigate, aside from just the mask wearing that our medical staff has provided us with?
I guess I will answer and ask my colleagues to jump in. I do think that the school system has done a very good job trying to utilize all the mitigation measures. We try to cohort children, we try to, they've improvements in ventilation, trying to have more outside time, which I know is hard in August, and, and, you know, trying to minimize mixing of groups. So I, those are some of the, some of the items that have been worked on. I might ask others to weigh in, I think.
Hi, my name is Kim Atreven, under the Director for Infection Prevention at Tampa General Hospital, and also the Director over the T-Pro program, which I know has worked closely with you guys. In general, there are certainly other infection prevention practices that we can implement, like Dr. Emanuel stated. The challenge that we're also working with here is at a grand scale, which is what we're working with, with you guys. Vaccination and mask use really is the most effective two practices that would help mitigate any type of transmission in your settings.
Okay, thank you. So that is the end of my medical questions for now. Do you want me to hold board questions and then get back in the queue so others can ask medical questions?
No, you have a few more minutes, and thank you, Member Vaughn, for being considerate. I appreciate that. Go ahead.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. So one of the things I wanted, there are several things I just kind of wanted to ask about. I appreciate the medical feedback on that, but I have been asked about other mitigation strategies that I've spoken with you about Superintendent Davis consistently, and I know you've gotten me some answers back on some of them. In regards to, I just want to state publicly that Superintendent Davis did say that to offer bonuses to incentivize our teachers and our staff members to get vaccinated, as Orange County has done, that if we offered a $50 bonus, if every one of our employees took advantage of that, we'd be looking at about $1 million. Is that correct? A little over $1 million to incentivize that? And do we have the ability to pay for that out of ESRS funding, if that's something that, okay, we wanted to do? And I know you also mentioned that there was a test, I asked for test prices so we could talk about getting testing on our campuses, and you said the most reliable test was about $100 per test. Is that correct?
That is correct. We're working through the Department of Health, who's going to help us identify geographical locations to start, to, to help us with identifying staff, at the same token, being able to have assessments for our students and for our staff. We're just working through that process with them. They've been great to be able to afford that opportunity, and we're ready to go as soon as they're ready to be able to stand it up.
So I know that you mentioned you wanted to have the most reliable test, but the question leads, when we look at our policies about students who have to, you know, to show a test, whether or not they have tested positive, and whether or not they can go back to school, do we accept all tests? Do we accept home testing?
Through the chair, we do accept the majority of assessments. I'm going to go to Mrs. Barano.
Good afternoon, board members. So right now, to answer your question, Member Vaughn, the assessments, the diagnostic tests that are used to return from quarantine are either a PCR or an antigen test, which is also known as the rapid test, and we require those to be done outside of the home. We accept home tests in order to identify a positive student, but in order to return early from quarantine, we require testing outside of the home.
Okay, thank you. And I know the last thing is talking about, the biggest concern is at lunch, and, you know, what we can do as far as distancing students. And I know we've talked with CTA, and they've been very kind to talk about whether or not we can offer paying teachers to work through their lunches, whether we can offer comp time, what we can do to help encourage teachers to be able to keep kids in their classroom during lunch. And I hate to overburden our teachers, but we want to talk about strategies. Is that something that we're able to do, and what does that look like going forward?
Yes, ma'am.
That's okay. If you need me to get back in the queue, I certainly can.
I'm trying to figure right now who's going to answer that question.
I can answer that question real fast, and I can transition back to.
Oh, good. Okay.
So it's, we know that, you know, I've said it from day one, 18 months ago, that being able to social distance is very hard to do in an educational setting. And as we talk about lunch, that's one of the areas, and our common areas, that we openly are struggling with. And as you know, that we have federal guidelines about the timing between breakfast and lunch, that we're able to offer lunch. And if we, you know, had to put in new strategies related to social distancing throughout the entire campus for all of our students, and look at a high school such as Newsome, we would have to start, you know, lunch before students even came, the start of school, to, to the end of school. It's just not feasible to do. However, we're trying to look at different strategies to be, to put in place, whether or not we can potentially pay for staff to cover during their lunch, because their lunch is their 30-minute time. Can we potentially use ESRS funds to bring in additional part-time staff to be able to maximize different locations within our school, different common areas, outside facilities, to be able to make certain that we have that social distance, and it can, it can become a reality. So right now, we're looking at a number of opportunities. We could potentially give comp time as well. The issue is, is that, you know, our teachers are willing, and they go over and beyond. They need downtime for themselves as well, and we want to be able to respect that. But being able to look at different strategies, as I put in the communication today, we'll be able to do so and determine what's best to be able to get us to a part where not only our students feel comfortable, our parents and our employees feel comfortable as well.
Okay, and I have three other questions, but we will have another round of questions if I get back in the queue to give people more time.
Yes, Member Vaughn. I'm just thinking right now, we'll be a little eclectic, and this is in favor of the medical team, or in being very fair and polite. Ms. Brown, we have two individual questions from two individual board members. They're going to ask their medical questions, so you can let, relieve them of the requirement of staying for this entire meeting. So first, it's Member Snively. She's going to have a question, and then it's going to go right to Member Vaughn, and then we're going to go through, we'll go back into the queue with Member Combs.
Thank you. Member Perez also mentioned she had a medical question as well.
Oh, Member Perez has one, too. I apologize. So in all fairness, go ahead, Members Snively.
Okay, thank you. So first question I wanted to ask, one of the concerns that I have about requiring a medical opt-out form from our community is the capacity of our medical professionals to be able to meet that requirement. They're already very, yes, they're very backed up, as far as, I mean, if you go try and make an appointment with a physician, or you go into a clinic or a hospital, you will have to wait a very long time. And so now we're going to ask our medical community for more, even more bandwidth, when we have thousands of students, or thousands of parents and families who want to get some type of medical opt-out documentation from their medical professionals or their family physicians. And so one of the, that's one of the concerns I have. The second concern I have related to that is, who will be giving free, free healthcare for families who require a medical excuse that they, where they can't afford to go get a medical excuse? Is the medical community willing to give free healthcare to the students who will be unfairly treated because they won't be able to get to a doctor or, or a medical professional as, as much as someone who might be economically advantaged? So now I'm worried about equity and the disadvantaged, economically disadvantaged children who should get a medical opt-out, but will not be able to get one, because they're going to be lowest on the rung as far as getting healthcare if they don't have healthcare, or if they are unable to, if they don't have health insurance. So is anyone willing to tackle that question about free healthcare for our lowest and disadvantaged children?
Yes, ma'am. Through the chair, we'll have to go out and work with our medical providers and see what they're willing to do to be able to close that gap. So, but we're willing to do so. And Ms. Brown, anything from your side?
I think Dr. Emanuel would like to speak.
So, Member Snively, I appreciate, I think that it is a concern, that I think that families, in terms of timeliness of getting a medical exemption, is a concern. It's a valid concern. I would say that the majority of children who would meet the need, who would meet the recommendations for opting out of a mask are part of our children with special healthcare needs, and those children are covered through our Children Medical Services, our Department of Health, our Medicaid and waiver programs. So I think that the majority of those children with medical issues would have healthcare. And I just would comment that it may be difficult for families to find physicians to sign medical waivers. Many of the Florida pediatricians feel strongly to not sign those waivers unless there is a true medical reason.
Thank you for answering that, Dr. Emanuel. I appreciate your time and being on the panel. The, I had a follow-up question. Now, I just lost my train of thought, so I apologize. But the one thing I wanted to also ask is about the Department of Health. Looking across our school districts in the state, I have noticed that Orange County Public Schools have done a really great job of managing this. If you were to go to their COVID dashboard site, you would see that they have partnered with the Department of Health. They've actually passed the baton to the Department of Health, Health for the most part, to manage COVID. And if you look at their dashboard today, they actually have 1,112 total confirmed cases, and that's different than reported cases. Let me just make that notation, because our website says reported, whereas theirs are confirmed cases, and they only have 655 quarantined individuals. So that's 655 compared to our 10,000, and we have about 700 more reported cases, not confirmed. Why, why are we not doing what they're doing with partnering with the Department of Health to manage our quarantine and protocol? And if we, can we, is there a way to do what they're doing so that we have less impact, less students, less healthy students being quarantined, less students being taken out of school and losing learning time, more efficient reporting, more validated reporting by the Department of Health? And it just seems like they're, they've got, they've gotten it right. They have 24,000 employees and 210,000 students. So with Dr. Holt on the line still, I hope, or someone from the Department of Health, why can we not do what they're doing in Orange County? And if we can do it, how do we get there? How do we get there so that less children are missing school, less children are impacted? Because they have the same, they're following the same executive order that we're following right now, without the medical opt-out. How are they doing it so well?
Yes, ma'am. Through the chair, I'll start, and then I can veer to the Department of Health and our staff as well. So one thing that the, that Orange County, first of all, they have a magnificent superintendent with Dr. Jenkins and good staff. One thing they do that we, we do, they do not do, is that we leverage our internal staff. We leverage our COVID leads, our administrators, to be able to contact trace, because the Department of Health, and no disrespect, they, they're stretched. So they are days and days behind to be able to come into our schools to identify who's had direct or indirect contact within, within our schools due to a positive case. With that said, with Orange County not having their internal staff to be able to lead that work, I believe that, you know, that either A, they're backlogged, and a number of students may not have been identified within the span that they have been, they've had direct contact with. So from that side of it, you know, we have, I mean, we've championed it. We've been really transparent. And then the other thing, I believe, the Orange County, and correct me if I'm wrong, team, the Orange County does not identify, only captures students that have been positive as identified in school, not into the community. So from our side of it, we're capturing any time that anyone reports to us, whether they've contracted COVID in the community, or they've, you know, identified it within a school. Anytime that we hear of it, we make that as a part of the indicator within, on our staff. So we push, and I've had conversations with the superintendent, our staff as well. Anything that I've missed that you may want to add? Ms. Barano?
So the superintendent's done a, done a great job of identifying that that is the case, that we are reporting students and employees who have to quarantine from exposure outside of the school, whereas other districts are not necessarily doing that. And part of the reason that we do that is because we are in full compliance with the emergency order regarding attendance. So we make sure that by capturing those students in our student information system, that they are not marked absent, and that they are captured as a quarantine. So that's first and foremost. Our COVID leads and our school staff that have been trained by me to do the initial contact tracing are surgical in their approach. There is not a conversation that is not had with them about decisions related to quarantine, where we don't push in and make sure that only the students who absolutely need to be quarantined are quarantined. And I'd like to add that this year, we have adopted quarantine guidelines that actually reduce the number of students who have to be quarantined. If we had been going by last year's guidelines, we would have even more. So this year, we're able to exclude students from quarantine who are at least three feet apart, where both the positive student and the exposed student are wearing a mask. And we are able to reduce quarantine to five days for a student where they can take a test on day five. So those things together were initiatives that the superintendent asked us to employ to reduce the number of days that our students are going to miss education.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your responses. I think I'll reiterate from some of the public comment, that I don't believe that we should be the health professionals and the health officers of this school district. That is something that should belong to true medical professionals, true health professionals. We are here to educate our students. That is our job. It is not our job to determine what is the right decision as far as a student's health. So I will continue to advocate for doing whatever Orange County Public Schools is doing that's working through the Department of Health, where they're offering vaccines, they're offering testing after hours on sites, and they're, they're confirming their reports through their Medical Information Bureau, so that we know whether that person is actually COVID-positive, or whether a parent is just calling up and telling the school that they think their child is COVID-positive. Thank you.
Uh, board member?
I'm sorry, Member Gray. I just wanted to, I neglected to respond to Ms. Snively's full remark regarding the confirmed piece. So part of our protocol, which I emailed to everybody, is that the positive students or employees are emailed to the Department of Health, and their investigators do take over, so that if there's a misunderstanding where a parent might have misunderstood a test result, or they don't have a result, they take up the investigation from there. So at the time that we post to the dashboard, cases are not confirmed, but in order to have expedient transparency, we're being honest about the fact that these are reported cases. And after the Department of Health does their work, they let us know if there's some piece of our investigation with regard to what we've submitted to them that's, that's not complete.
Thank you. Ms. Barano, you're doing an excellent job, and we're not doubting your thoroughness at all, and I know you take that. I just trying to, this is a very emotional time for all the board members and the superintendent, and all our staff. So we're going to carefully craft our questions and remarks, and it's not to say that we don't appreciate what you're doing.
Yes, ma'am.
So, board members, if we can be quick on the medical questions, so they can, the medical folks can go home and have dinner, or whatever's next on their agenda. Member Perez, I'm so sorry I skipped you. So I want to go ahead with you, and then I'll go right to Member Han. He's got a medical question.
So with regards to Member Combs' motion, how would 30 days of mask wearing in a district our size assist with decreasing quarantine and positivity numbers and the spread of COVID-19 Delta variant in our schools?
So who we ask this to? Member Perez?
It's whoever can answer the question.
Medical team?
This is Kim with T-Pro at Tampa General. If you have two students that are both wearing masks, and one were to come up positive, that actually is not considered an exposure. So that's where large mask usage actually is beneficial, if we're talking about having to quarantine students afterwards.
Oh, Member Perez, does that answer your question on that one?
So how would 30 days of mask wearing in a district our size assist with decreasing the spread of COVID-19 variant in our school? Right now, we have 10,384 students on quarantine and 338 employees. How would that assist in decreasing these numbers?
I'll let Mike jump in on this as well, but I, if we can start out small, where we're talking 30 days at a time, I don't think this is something that we need to we're talking 30 days at a time, I don't think this is something that we need to jump right into an extended period of time of mask-wearing. But when you're talking about how fast and how quickly Delta is moving through our community, in 30 days, we may actually be in a very different situation than we are now. That's kind of the challenge that we're having with Delta. It's spreading very, very quickly compared to the other variants that we've seen over the last year or so. So 30 days, we may be in a very different situation and may not need to extend it, but that's one of those things that I think would be best to reassess at that time.
Yeah, thanks, Kim, for tackling that. This is Mike, and I agree. I mean, the numbers right now are all pointing in the same direction, which is which is up. Cases are up, hospitalizations are up, deaths are up. But as Kim stated, the other parts of the world that have seen this variant come through, you know, 30 days later, the trend looks very different. So it's it's definitely something we're monitoring every single day, and that's why I came and prevented presented some some very up-to-date numbers for you, because it is changing that quickly.
Member Perez, is that satisfactory? Thank you. Member Hahn for the doctors?
Thank you, yes. Is Dr. Holt still on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Holt. So some information that your department shared just now was around the peak in January, where we had 340, I think it was adults per day, and 110 children, and then the peak now, 307 and 59. Is it pretty typical for these types of viruses or viruses in general to ebb and flow throughout the year? Meaning hitting peaks and then moving downward? That's pretty common, would you say?
Well, I mean, COVID is a pandemic, so we don't have an experience comparable to our normal seasonal type of experience. If you look back historically, 1918 and others, the answer is yes. I think what's different and what has come out of this discussion was the the Delta variants has given us a magnitude, a jump, that we did not predict or anticipate. So, you know, it's a lot of this is going to be trying to calm down the amount of viral transmission and subsequently not only infecting other people, but that continued promotion of vaccine for variants of what we're facing.
Thank you. How did we how long did we sustain that peak in January? Was it a month, a week? When how long before we saw those numbers start to decrease back in January?
Let me look at have to look back at the calendar. There is a difference, at least we're predicting, and Mike, you might have the specifics, is that and this is hopeful because unfortunately, a lot of times with COVID, we've hoped or expected it to do things, and it hasn't. But in other countries, when Delta has burned through, it's the magnitude of how many are infected are so sudden, the down slope is usually more steep. It comes down faster than what we've seen in our previous two. But Mike, do you have the?
Yeah, I mean, each one of our peaks has actually been relatively unique, and the first peak in the summer lasted, you know, about three to four weeks of sustained pretty high levels of transmission. The winter peak was much different and was occurring while vaccines were rolling out with different levels of mitigation. If you remember, you know, different things were closing and opening. And we were at very high levels of transmission in the winter of 2020 for almost three months. It was a long, sustained, elevated amount of virus that was in the in our community during the winter surge. And so really, using those may not be the best guiding information for future waves. I think looking at what Delta has done in other parts of the world and other parts of the U.S. may be a little bit more telling, but again, it's, you know, we're using our best guesses.
Right. No, I appreciate that. So during the summer, which was when we had the Delta variant, we were some peaks were lasting three to four weeks. Where are we right now in this current peak? It's this week, one, two, three? What week is this?
I don't know that we can say we've peaked. It may appear that the positivity rate is slowing down in our community, but I can't even confidently say we've peaked. If we if we have, we're at day one or week one.
Okay.
So we're right there.
All right, thank you. So the positivity rate is slowly you're seeing a little bit of a slow decrease. I want to shift now to the vaccines, if I could, Dr. Holt. Right now, we have, you mentioned 51% of individuals in our community with at least the first vaccination, 14% not eligible. That 14% includes children as well as maybe medically fragile adults?
No, that 14% is an age-specific eligibility. It's not. There are within the other age groups, there are going to be some patients that the physicians recommend not to be vaccinated.
So that 14% is strictly children who are not eligible for vaccinations?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So we've mentioned here today that, you know, obviously, some of the other physicians have said vaccinations are very critical in mitigating this virus. So and one of our board members suggested that the school district actually give bonuses as incentives. I am just wondering, as a Department of Health in this area, do you know of whether the county commission, the city council, or even the mayor is offering any type of monetary incentives to the community at large to get vaccinated at this time?
Not to the community at large. I know the county government has provided a $50 incentive for their staff, but no one has put together or has the resources devoted to that. That's typically been done on more of a state level across the country.
Okay, so the county, the city, the mayor, there's not this concerted effort around those to offer any type of community-wide incentive. So I guess the last thing I want to just circle back to is something that Member Snively mentioned, and that was around the assistance with quarantining, because we are clearly struggling with that. I know that your staff is stretched, as the superintendent mentioned. You can imagine, as educators who are focusing on educating students every day, our staff in our schools are incredibly stretched right now, and it's we're kind of at this tipping point where so much energy is being focused on the keeping up with the quarantine data and enforcing the quarantine protocols that, you know, if we are at a point where more energy is being expended on that in our schools and on instruction. And that's pretty critical to the work we do, that we spend a lot of most of our energy on instruction, and especially given last year. How can we partner? How can your department help us in alleviating some of that from our school district and moving that into the Department of Health, much like Orange County is doing?
I don't know if, you know, and again, as the superintendent mentioned, I think what you see on the Orange County dashboard is not comparable to what is happening. I think they have quite a few kids that are quarantined and out, just not reported in their main means of reporting. But as relates to taking over, doing more, as Ms. Sperano talked, we've we actually are right with them the whole time, and I think as a team, we're doing a phenomenal job. But we're happy to do as much as we can if we could be of more value.
Well, I absolutely appreciate that. I know the superintendent wants to comment, but I just want to say thank you, Dr. Holt. Thank you to all the medical experts that are joining us today. I know that you are incredibly overworked and stressed, and I really can't thank you enough as as a school board member and just as a member of this community for all the work you're doing on behalf of everybody in our community during this very difficult time. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate it. Mr. Superintendent, would you like to comment?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Dr. Hahn. And I appreciate the strategy from Ms. Snively and Dr. Hahn as well, because, you know, my question would be to Dr. Holt, if, you know, our staff, which is overstressed and, you know, in every single day, if we backed out and just allowed you and your team to do that, is that feasible to do? Because we have so much to do to be able to address our kids from a social, emotional, academic standpoint. We are trying to to focus on unfinished learning that's taking that our children have been impacted for the last, you know, 18 months and being able to accelerate learning every single day. So my question is, Dr. Holt, can your team absorb that if our team if our team is relieved, not fully, but, you know, set you up for it and allowed us to to transition back to focus on what we do best, which is education?
Yeah, at this, you know, at this time, absolutely, we do not have the capability to surge up, if you will, you know, and so I would have to answer that we would not be able to step in and assume that role.
Is there a timeline, sir, that with this understanding that you could be able to expand your teams to be able to to take on this initiative? And I'm sorry to ask these questions. I just we're just trying to make an informed decision so that we can focus on protecting, keeping children in schools, and at the same time, being sensitive to where we are with COVID and the variant.
Well, I mean, I think the answer to that question will require, again, sort of my leads and your leads, understanding just what how to redistribute if and what's possible. I do not think it's a matter it would be impossible to just turn it over and say, here, and walk away from it.
Last thing, so let's we'll engage that conversation starting tomorrow and see where we are to see if we can make any potential adjustments, whether it works or not. If it doesn't work, we'll continue the load. If it can, we'll be able to identify those strategies, and I'll report back to the board of my findings.
Yeah, I wanted to ask a question, and I know we have one more from Member Vaughn. My question's pretty simple, and this will go to Mike and certainly, Dr. Holt, I appreciate your answer, and we are trying to keep you as an inclusionary partner wherever we can. And really, I apologize too, because I don't know whether you're prepared to answer with some of these broader questions. But my question's pretty simple. We open school. We know that many children, of course, elementary are not vaccinated, but many children are not vaccinated above 12 years old. And we open with the aspiration of many people being masked, many students being masked, and teachers as well. We don't see that happening. I was at a school just this morning, a high school, and it doesn't take long to realize that more kids than not are not paying attention. They're not being masked. So my question is, we want, just like yourself, just like everyone in this room that I'm sitting on sitting in, we want to mitigate the spread of the virus. We want to prevent any possibility of sickness, grave illness from staff, students, teachers. We all want the same thing. We all do. We're all in agreement. The question is, since 220-something thousand students have entered school, and we know that they've probably been carriers maybe before they got into school, I understand that, so you can almost switch to the next week. Do you feel that a mask, based on your scientific knowledge, after hearing many comments from this audience and beyond, do you feel that a mask mandate for 30 days, regardless of the peak, because this is not a seasonal, the Delta variant is not a seasonal situation? You made that very clear. Peaks and valleys, peaks and valleys are not are not part of this scenario. Do you feel that that will make a difference to the safety, the medical safety, I'm talking medical, of our children? Secondly, do you feel that it is possible that within 30 days, one of our children, maybe more, staff or teachers, will get sick, possibly maybe die? Because what we're doing right now in this dais, we're making a tough decision, and we're counting on those masks to make the difference. I know 30 days doesn't sound long, but that's what we're looking at. So can you give us a finite answer based on the motion we have made, based on the very well-put-together questions? Will it make a difference? And that can go?
Can address the question about does masks make a difference? They will. They will reduce the amount of virus that is in the air around within the schools, and therefore, you will can expect to see fewer infections that occur in the school. There's still going to be plenty of infections going on outside the schools, and right now, that's our biggest concern. So as you have responsibility within the schools, the wearing of masks will help while they're there. As far as the 30 days, I think that's a that's an unknown that we don't really, I can't speculate on. I think we are hoping to see the cases drop, and forecasts that we've been given have put us in the early part of September, that we should see begin that down slope. But that's those forecasts have not always been reliable. As far as a death, I pray not. And again, the best way to prevent that is the vaccinations, particularly in the staff, the adults. That's where the vaccine has had its greatest impact.
So I'm not really hearing a clear answer, so let me just go ahead and say this. If we looked at the comparison of last year where we had masks mandated, there was clearly not we were not the schools were not a driver of the virus. Now, the question I'm trying to get to, and the answer is, will schools or are schools now a driver of this virus person, student to student, student to family, and will masks prevent it? And I think that's I guess that's the question I'm asking, but if?
Yeah, no. I think if you're talking about if you're if you're talking about a mass policy to implement the schools in hopes of of reducing the community transmission, you know, the transmission that's driving it right now is the 18- to 40-year-olds that are unvaccinated. So what you're well, I think what we're talking about, at least, is within the school, is there a way to reduce the risk of exposure while at school? But if you're talking about, will this alone, without masking, widespread, without more vaccination in the entire community, change the curve? The answer is no.
So you're saying that masks will not make a difference if we demand masks or mandate masks on kids?
It will not make a difference in our community, all those infections going on outside the?
No, I'm talking in the school, Dr. Holt.
In the school, yes. I think I made that very clear. I believe it will reduce.
It will reduce.
Infections in the school.
Okay, and that's quantifiable. Perhaps in the next month, we can ask for a data point comparing one month from another month in that masks were not worn, you know, week one, but masks were worn for two weeks straight. So there would be some data to suggest that, yes, it's affirmative that less spread has been created in schools because they wore the masks.
I think as I think as we've talked about, by itself alone, you can't sometimes be so clear, black and white. What we're talking about is that it is something that will reduce the amount of virus within the school and therefore will reduce what you would have expected to have seen. So it's a matter of not necessarily that you'll see sudden drop off of the numbers, but without a masking, you would anticipate and likely have seen quite a few more.
Okay, so we're looking at a reduction due to mask-wearing in the schools, and that's a reduction possibly of greater sicknesses, et cetera. We can conclude the rest of that sentence. Member Vaughn, I know you have a question. Member Von, I know you have a question, medical question, and, and my heartfelt gratitude to all of the medical staff for, for sharing all your medical thoughts. We do have two more questions. We have Member Von, and then we have Member Combs. So at this time, Member Von, would you go ahead and address, and then we'll have Member Combs has a question.
Thank you, Chairwoman Gray. And I guess my questions are follow-up questions to, to my fellow board members. In regards to Member Perez's question, what I understood is, if we had a more stringent mask mandate and more children wearing masks, we would be quarantining less, because as students sit next to unmasked students, that is what's driving up our quarantine numbers. If they were masked students next to each other, they wouldn't have to quarantine. Am I understanding the answer and that data correctly, that part of what's driving up our, our quarantine numbers right now are that there are more unmasked students? That's the first question. To the medical, medical group.
All righty. I mean, I, I mean, just...
Ms. Von, I can address your question. So based on the, the new guidance from the Centers for Disease Control, students who are at least three feet apart, where both the positive student and the exposed student are masked, the exposed students would not have to quarantine. So as long as they were three feet apart, you are correct, students who are exposed to a positive student would not have to quarantine.
Okay, so it would drive down our quarantine rates and allow more students to stay in school to get the instruction that they need to. Thank you for that answer. And then I guess the last question in lieu of what Member Gray was asking is, if we keep the mask optional mandate as it is, with more, more parental choice and parents opting out, does that really turn our schools into super-spreaders in comparison to last year? I guess would be my question from, from the medical providers. But I think they might be gone, so I might be screaming that into the void and, and not have an answer. But regardless, thank you.
I'll just make one comment. There has been, if you, if you don't mind, there has been a CDC MMWR study that looked at Georgia for a period of time, and looking at schools that mandated masks versus did not require masks. And it was around a 30, 37% decrease in infection rate in those schools. And that was published in the MMWR this May. So there is some data. It's complicated, very complex, because there's a lot of community transmission, as Dr. Holt referred to. So it's very hard to separate. Most of the, a lot of the transmission we had last year was in, in the school was really community transmission. However, I think there is some, some data regarding the difference with masks.
Okay. And it might have been that we had masks that allowed it to be more spread communally since they were masks in school. But in general, I just want to say thank you to all the medical providers. I really appreciate your time. Thank you to Tracy Brown for arranging this kind of last minute for me and working so hard to make this happen. I really, really, really appreciate having medical providers here, so thank you.
Thank you, Member Von. And Member Combs actually was next in the queue originally. She does have a medical question. I do hope, and I want to thank your patience, we do have one more question. Member Combs, you can go ahead with your time, spend time with that medical question, and then lend yourself to whatever questions you have. Thank you.
Actually, my medical question was answered by, asked by Member Von, and I do think, you know, sitting down and going in deeper, talking about quarantining is really, really important. So I guess I'll take my, my five minutes now and say, I have to be honest, two months ago, I did not, I felt like we were going to be mask-free the entire year. I am an educator, I understand the social, emotional impact of children wearing masks. I can't imagine having to teach children to read, because that is, that requires a lot of, of, you know, using your lips. I think it's very important for kids about the facial expressions to learn. I am very concerned about long-term speech therapy, so that's why I was very intentional with my 30 days. I want schools to stay open. For me, this is not political. I am not on the board for political divisiveness. I am on the board because I care about children. I know that children want to be in school. Children have returned back to school because they want to be there. I am not going to close this district or this organization. That is not what I'm going to do. If it requires children to wear, wear masks for 30 days, so we can go past this peak, that is what I'm asking for. COVID is going to be here in five years, 10 years. We are going to have to learn to live with COVID. But right now, I think it's really important to mask our children for 30 days and our faculty and staff. I know personally, my daughter last year had 38 days of quarantine. And each time, she tested negative. And when she went to get the vaccination, she had the antibodies, and she was asymptomatic. I realize that this happens, but we have to keep our schools open. We have to look at more effective ways of quarantining students. It is not fair for so many, 10,000 students out in the seventh day of school. We have to look at proof positive tests, not that somebody calls and says that they have COVID. We need to make sure we are really looking at kids who are quarantined and kids who actually come back positive. I look at Broward County and Hillsborough County and the staff with the open houses and the pre-planning. Broward County, as of today at 3 o'clock, had 140 positive cases. Hillsborough County, we have 519 faculty and staff currently out. Our teachers, our bus drivers, our administrators, they are doing double duty. Our staff, our cabinet, everybody's out there working. I do not want to close this district. That is my goal. I will say, you also have to look at our community. If somebody's having cardiac arrest and they have to call an ambulance now, our hospitals are really, really being impacted, our emergency rooms are being impacted. This is, this is what we're living with right now. And I will say, for those parents who say they want to take our kids out and put them in a private school, 80% of our private schools in Hillsborough County have current mandates. Saint Mary's, three weeks. Corbett Prep, one month. CDS, 30 days. Tampa Prep indefinitely until they see. Academy of the Holy Names, same thing. Jesuit, optional, okay? There are some schools, but generally, our community is looking for 30 days to mitigate this. I do not, I hope that my children will not be wearing masks in 40 days, but right now, I feel it is more important to keep children open, keep schools open, because we have to look at the emotional impact, the Baker Acts, the suicides, when children are brought back into isolation. It is really, really important that we look at the whole picture, and we really stop making this political, and we really think about what's best for kids. I'm not here for the adults. I'm not here for politics. I'm here to keep kids in school.
Thank you, Member Combs. And Board members, just so you're reminded, I did release the medical staff due to no more questions, and also due to the fact that they have already done the burden of giving us a lot of extra time. And I want to thank Ms. Brown for accommodating, and I want to thank Superintendent Davis, I should have done this in the first place, for also saying you'll be 100% behind whatever the board decides. I wanted to say that right away, because I know where, where your heart and your head is at the same time. So with that being said, Member Combs, we're going to go right into the next comment, looks like Member Washington, and, and good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple, a couple of things to speak on today. First of all, you know, I'm here as a board member for the welfare of all children, also and all people, because this is important, this is real. We are dealing with a real-life situation now, and what we need to do sometimes is think logically. I heard the speakers, a couple of speakers said, well, you know, only, only 1% of somebody was sick. We don't want anybody sick. That's what we're here for, school board members, superintendent staff, we are here to protect all students. We need to get out of here with zero percentage. That's what's important. And, you know, I don't want to take away from the parents, because I'm a parent, I'm a grandparent. I don't want to take nothing away from you, but our job is to take care of students. That's what we do. We are lively and color up here, taking care of students, and that's what we are here for. I know everybody have opinion, you know? Everybody as a, now is a doctor, you know, people say, oh, you can't do this. One lady told me, one lady I was talking to, she said, only be gone in two weeks. We don't, she doesn't know, we don't know that, but they're making statements. But you know what? Weird, and it's not weird, this is reality, people. You know what reality is? When you get sick, why you don't go to a mechanic? Why? Because mechanic is not a doctor. So you want to go to somebody that had expertise and can help. That's important to keep in mind, because doctors, medical people have expertise. I don't have expertise, we're educators. You know, they save, they save lives, and we do too, but we save lives in a different way, because we prepare students for life. So we, we have to look at, that's very important to look at. When, when we talk about District 5, and that's my district, I'm concerned, because you have a lot of people in District 5 that have free, free healthcare. So Superintendent, what happens, and I'm directing this question to you, what, what happens if a student or a parent can't get to the facilities? Because you know, free healthcare, when you make appointments, you have to, whenever you have opportunity to get in. Say they, they can't get in, and the student has some kind of illness to opt out. So how are we going to accommodate those students and those parents?
Yes, for the Chair. Our responsibility, we have a number of, you know, family and community engagement liaisons, and also parent liaisons that can really help expedite that. So we can also use our relationships that we have with our local medical providers and our family practitioners to be able to maybe push the needle a little bit sooner to be able to get them in to have that review. But we're here to continue to support. We'll work with our parents if they get to a point where they don't have accessibility, and to Ms. Navley's point, really, it's going to be a problem. I mean, me personally, I try to go be able to see my practitioner, and it's in October for me to be able to sign up. So we know that there's going to be barriers that our students are going to be faced with, that we're going to have to make the accommodations necessary for those individuals, and, and work to see how, you know, can we expedite that process to be able to allow them to come in? I think we'll have to look at it case-to-case basis to be able to provide it, but we also don't want that learner to miss any educational, you know, exposure as well, so to make sure that they continue to, to drive forward and thrive in the educational setting. So we'll have to work on an individual basis, we'll have to get with our team openly and honestly to figure out how that looks, and figure out how our family, community engagement office can be an active part in that process.
Okay. Because I, I know it's important, especially in District 5.
Yes, sir.
We have a low, low income, and people need help. I mean, we're, we're in the stages of life now where people need help. My next question, quarantine, I'd be, I'm confused. I'm confused because I don't know, what are we talking about, days? How, how many days do we have, Mrs. Pirro? Because some people say 10 days, eight days, five days.
Yes, sir. Thank, thank you very much for your question, Member Washington. So in all fairness, the, the rules kind of changed in the middle of the game on us, so I just want to be transparent about that. So COVID leads from all sites were trained on July 31st and August 2nd regarding what was, what was then the protocol, and then on August 6th, when the emergency rules came into existence, things switched up a little bit. So we had about 24 hours over a weekend to orient them to those new rules. So the new rules are, they're different for students than they are for employees regarding quarantine. Students, the, the emergency rule is written that students can test four days after exposure, which is day five.
Okay.
Okay, it can be any test, it can be a, an antigen or a PCR at a facility, and if they are unable to test, they can return on day eight, which is seven days of quarantine. In both situations, the student has to return to school symptom-free. Whether the parent chooses to test them or not, they have to be symptom-free in order to return to school. For employees, however, for adults, it's a day six PCR, so six days after exposure, they can return from quarantine on day eight, or if the employee chooses not to test, they can return on day 11, which is a 10-day quarantine.
And I appreciate, Ms. Pirro, can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
Into the answer your, go back to your other question, thank you, because it really is complex, and it's really, has, we've been on this roller coaster related to the transitions of quarantine, and we're trying to keep up. But also, we have a number of our students last year that were part of the exemptions, and our schools hubbed and housed that information, so we can roll that information over if they can't, if they don't have the inability to be able to have accessibility to a family practitioner. So that should take care of the majority of those, but we'll continue to work on a, you know, an individual basis to be able to help.
Okay. Another question, and this is a little for academics. So when a kid is quarantined, how are we, how are we getting them their academic assignments?
Go ahead.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Washington. So when students are quarantined, we are leveraging the Canvas Learning Management System, so teachers have at their availability all of the lessons and resources that have been provided by the district. Teachers obviously have the ability to customize those lessons as they see fit, to fit their scope and sequence of their curriculum. We, we also have the ability to have paper packets, so if students are without technology at home, teachers can send homework through paper packets. And then, of course, we're looking, this week, we are actually advertising virtual teachers to assist at K-5. So when students are sent home and quarantined, they need instructional assistance on the work that they have been provided by their teacher, they will be able to call in and receive that, receive that assistance as needed.
Okay. Now, I know in, in some of my, some of my areas, District 5, sometimes they don't have transportation, and they don't have phones to make calls, so how are we, how are we having accountability to know, to help those students? Because some, some, some parents don't have phones, they don't have transportation, so when a kid leave, when you leave quarantine, does he take work with him, or how do they make contact with the parent?
So essentially, we would do everything, most of it is through the phone system or through email or whatever electronic communications that we have, but we would do everything at our ability. I mean, if we have to drive to that, to that student's house, whatever we need to do in order to make that communication and connect with them, we will exhaust every opportunity to do so.
And school staff continues to go over and beyond, at the same token, being able to leverage our social workers, and there's a particular need for us to move additional social workers from one region to one set of schools to another set of schools, we'll make that flexibility to be, to be able to tier schools based on the overarching need.
Good. I just want to make it clear, because, you know, we're going to have some more quarantine, I'm quite, I believe, I believe we will, but I want every parent and every student to have a right to education besides, you know, the medical part of it too, because we, we are here to develop the whole child. That's important. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Washington. Member Perez?
Thank you. So yesterday, I listened to the COVID emergency meeting, and I heard concerns and urgency for the following laws and rules in order to keep our students safe. So let me speak to the following, to following laws and rules when it comes to disbursement of funds to schools, especially ESSER, because you've spoken to this issue. So I want to speak to, as to what was stated yesterday. They said, what makes our country great? So what makes our country great is when ESSER funds are sent, were, were sent out March 24th, 2021, in order to ensure the safety, because we're talking about safety of students, in the midst of a pandemic, to be exact, $4.7 billion to the state of Florida. in the midst of a pandemic, to be exact, $4.7 billion to the state of Florida. $400 million to Hillsborough County schools alone. And now, in the midst of another surge, and then to ensure that the schools have access to these funds on a timely manner, that's what makes our country great. And putting student safety first. These funds were supposed to be sent to our local education agencies in 60 days. And that would have been in June. We are now in August. The audacity of lawmakers not to comply with the dispersment of these funds and to hold these funds in a bucket for their use, however they please. Whether these lawmakers agree with that or not, should be addressed at this time. Students are being in brick and mortar is essential for learning, and the safety of these students is paramount. Let me say that word one more time, paramount. These funds are needed in order to secure our schools for our students at this time. And with that said, I'm going to read the Department of Health's emergency rule. It says, because of the importance of in-person learning to the educational, social, emotional, and mental well-being, removing healthy students from the classrooms for lengthy quarantines should be limited at all cost. Now, some who were speaking today spoke of oppression. And to Member Snively's point regarding equity. Black and Latino communities have been experimental targets of governments for many years. And not only understanding oppression, but they have lived oppression for many, many years and continue to live this way today. Now imagine having illness for which they have no primary care or access to healthcare, which we have spoken about at this stage. It would be incredible to see the numbers of those who spoke today on behalf of oppression of our black and Latino communities and the funding of these schools. But I have yet to see that. I have yet to see 120, 100 and, and 100 people, even five people, speaking to the oppression of our black and Latino communities, or even to speak of the withholding of ESSER funds to this district. Our student demographic in Hillsborough County are black 20%, Latino 36%, Asian 4%, multiracial 6%, for a total of 68% of our students being in the highest category for contracting COVID-19, or for their family members. Currently, we have 10,384 students and 338 of our employees under isolation or quarantine. And we're only into day seven of 2021-22 school year. Florida leads the nation with children hospitalized for COVID-19. And frankly, we do not know what this is going to look like for them in years to come from now.
Thank you, Member Perez, for being respectful of time as well. I know board members have a lot to share tonight. And Member Han, you are next, followed by Member Snively.
Thank you, Member Gray, I appreciate it. So I want to switch the conversation to something I spoke about a little earlier around instruction. And, you know, I mentioned that we're kind of at a tipping point right now in our schools. And I've talked with many of our principals in the last two weeks, and especially over the last week. And they and their staff, whether it's the nurses, the APs, the COVID leads at the schools, are really, I mean, the, the amount of energy that they're spending on collecting data and the quarantine protocols, it, it is truly taken away from instruction. And, and that is very concerning. I know that we, we have quarantine numbers that are alarmingly high. We are at about 4.7 quarantine rate right now. I think last year, the first few weeks, we were at about 5.96 with the mask mandate. And we had a lot of mitigating strategies in place that aren't in place this year around athletics and extracurricular activities and protocols, after-school camps, and volunteers, et cetera. But I'm concerned about the, the COVID protocols. One, I, I am concerned about the staff being overwhelmed. And I'm, my one request would be that we use some of our ESSER money to hire part-time individuals for every one of our schools that will be solely dedicated to COVID, the data, the tracking. And hopefully, and I will say it was very disappointing when Dr. Holt said that they could not help us around the quarantining and the protocols. Hopefully, in later conversations, maybe there can be some type of partnership there. Especially, I know that there's federal money to support him scaling up his staff to help in that regard. But I would like, not an AP, not a teacher, maybe we could go to an outside employment company to help us identify that, so every school has an individual to help alleviate some of the stress that our staff is feeling, so they can move back to focusing on their expertise, which is instruction. So that's one of my concerns. The other is around how schools are quarantining. Because in these conversations with principals, it was really clear, every, a lot of principals, they're doing a great job, but they're all quarantining and using different quarantine protocols. Many are using the ones from last year, which, as you mentioned, were much stricter. It, it's my understanding, if we look at the Student Close Contact to Confirm Positive Cases, it says here, students who are vaccinated or who have tested positive in the last 90 days do not need to quarantine. Students who are within three to six feet of an infected student, where both students were engaged in masks, are excluded from quarantine. Yet, you know, I'm even getting outreach from parents who are saying, I don't understand why my daughter was quarantined, she's wearing a mask, she's vaccinated, and she's sitting, yes, a student was near her that was tested positive, but she's being asked to quarantine. Additionally, and, and so that contributes to a lot of the inflated numbers that we're seeing. Quite frankly, the lack of consistency around how schools are actually quarantining. When I hear there's a positive case in a third grade class, and the entire class is being quarantined, and yet, the majority of students in the class are masked, that's concerning to me. And that's being reflected in these numbers. And quite frankly, then it's being reported and picked up by the national media. And so my concern, and, and the bigger concern, obviously, is that we have students that are complying with these protocols around vaccinations, masks, or students unmasked, sitting more than six feet away and still being, being told to quarantine, are getting caught up now in, in not getting the, the brick and mortar instruction that we all agree, every one of us agree is so important here. I saw this, this is your flow chart. And I think it's, I think we need a flow chart, but this nowhere, even though this kind of is the protocols for controlling COVID, nowhere does it say here, students who are vaccinated or have tested positive need to quarantine, or don't need to, and about the masks or unmasked. So can you talk about that, please, Mr. Superintendent? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, so absolutely, we can add that to that flow chart. That flow chart is a, is a graphic that identifies how we do contact tracing, who, who's, what actions we take for a positive individual, those who've had direct and indirect contact. In addition, we should be, and I agree with you, we should be consistently implementing our, our COVID protocols. We've been explicit to be able to give all of our, our principals the, the close contact confirmed positive case protocols. We went over that information, only in a virtual meeting for them to ask any questions. We send that information via electronic. I know that Ms. Perano continues to have meetings with leads and is actively engaged in the quarantine process. But I'm not going to say what you talked about didn't happen, because today I've got a, a phone call from a parent that said, my child's quarantined. My child was quarantined, and my child has, is vaccinated, which is a concern for me. So we have to go back to the school, we track it back down, we explain the processes. But once again, we'll revisit that this week to be very explicit, so that they follow the protocols that are in place. And not last year's protocols, the ones we gave them before school, as they, as they changed by Department of Health and Department of Education, so we can implement those in a consistent manner. And I do that, I do believe that will help us really drill down on that process, because these are very clear. If you've had COVID in 90 days, as you talked about, you do not have to, you do not have to be quarantined at the same token. If you've been vaccinated, you do not have to quarantine either. So in, in addition to those who've had two masks within a three to six period process. So it's a reality.
Thank you, and, and just to close, you know, irregardless of where you fall today on the vote with the mask, the masks, this should be a concern to all of us around quarantining. Because whether we have masks, under Member Combs' is, is suggestion or not, we don't want kids caught up and, and pushed out of schools under any circumstances. So I do want to make sure that we really get tightened up around the, on our protocols for, for quarantining, whatever they may be, because clearly, it's not consistent across schools. Thank you, I'll get back in the queue.
Thank you, Member Han, Member Snively.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to say, I certainly did not mean to direct any negative or derogatory comments towards Ms. Perano, because she's doing the best that she can in the situation that she is in. And so I, you know, I don't, I don't want it to be taken the wrong way. But I do think we have some inconsistencies in our, in our district, as Dr. Han mentioned, when it comes to quarantine. Because these, the, the way that we are calculating these numbers could appear to be more dramatic than, than they actually are. So my question would be, and I don't know if you have this data, or you can get this data, but out of the, how many kids or how many students did we quarantine in the 2020 to 2021 school year? And out of those students, what percentage were, contracted the virus?
So we'll have to get the numbers for actual quarantines to that process. As relates to those who have contracted the virus, unless they tell us, we can't, we can't ask. So it's, it's up to the parent, if they desire, have the desire to let us know that they've contracted to be positive. And once they do that, we'll be able to capture it. But we'll have to go back and get all the numbers of quarantines. We'll get it for the entire school year to be able to.
That would be very helpful information, just because the feedback that I've gotten from parents, hundreds and hundreds of parents were, my kid keeps getting quarantined, he never got the virus. He continued, he's gotten quarantined three, four, or five times, never contracted the virus at, at any time. Now, I won't say that there's, that didn't happen, I'm just saying, I'm just going to take a, you know, a guess that it's probably a very, very low percentage of all the healthy kids that we quarantined that, that actually contracted the virus from that individual in the classroom that was a positive COVID case, and they were quarantined because of that individual student. So I would like to know that. Unfortunately, I, I guess we can't get the number of actual students. But I guarantee you, there are many, many stories across the district from families who had several weeks of quarantine for their student, and their student never became sick from being, from that student that, that they quarantined. You know, I appreciate Ms. Combs' idea of 30 days. I know that, that might, may or may not be a way to mitigate some of it. I think it sounds good on paper, I just, I have an issue with the logistical part of it. Because, and, and I appreciate you mentioning that you would do what you can for some of the, the children in our district who might have a harder time getting the medical documentation that they need to opt out. But the reality is, you can't make exceptions for some students and not make exceptions for others, right? Realistically, I know that you want to help all the students, that's obviously what we're trying to do here. But by the time some of these students get their medical opt-out forms, 30 days is going to be gone. It's going to take them 60 days. And you can't make exceptions for some and not for others. And so logistically, I just, I don't know that that would work in, in the, you know, in the, in the, the situation that we're in with our stretched and the bandwidth for our medical professionals. So I will, again, continue to advocate for the Department of Health. I, I want to be solution-oriented when it comes to this. Because I believe that if we can go do a little research, do a little more research with Superintendent Jenkins over in Orange County, figure out how their Department of Health was able to acquire the funds, whether they're state or federal, additional funding, to increase their capacity in order to take this over, practically take this over for the schools, so that we are not burdened with health, health responsibility as far as COVID is concerned. We, we can, like all the board members have said, focus on instruction, focus on instruction. Why are we here, teaching and learning? Why are we here, teaching and learning? So I would like to continue to look at that and see if that's a viable option. And then the last thing I'll say is, I have no interest today in breaking the law. We've gotten an executive order from the governor of our state. We have seen what the ramifications have been yesterday, were, and could be, potentially. Mr. Porter has described to us, to us what type of ramifications and consequences could occur if we go down that road. As a constitutional officer of the state of Florida, we took an oath. And the oath said, and I'll read it, "I do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida, that I'm duly qualified, that I'm duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state, and I will, will well and faithfully perform the duties of school board member on which I am now about to enter, so help me God." That's the oath we took as we entered into our office, "to defend the Constitution and government of the United States and the state of Florida. If we go against this order, we will be breaking the law."
Member Vaughn.
Thank you, Chairwoman. In response to Member Snively's comment, we, we did take an oath to uphold the Constitution. And both federally and our state constitution says that we have to offer equal access to students. And by withholding money to our district, that does not allow us to offer full access to education for students. Also, I think that this executive order really needs an interpretation by our judicial system to figure out whether this falls under state, state law, or whether or not this is actual law. So I don't, I don't necessarily appreciate people saying that, you know, by putting the health and safety of our students first and our staff members, that that's an admission of breaking the law. But I only have five minutes, so we'll go from here. I do want to address some things. Superintendent Davis, I, I have some things I want to address in regards to when we constantly talk about social distancing when, when applicable. But in every classroom that I've gone to, and I've had a plethora of parents confirm and teachers, that desks are being potted together. And I would like to formally request that desks be spread out and that we actually apply social distancing when we can. Also, I know that there's been talk about teachers getting a list of students who have opted out, and teachers having access to that, and I've been told that they haven't at this point. So whatever we decide going forward, if there's a list of students that have opted out, whether it's medically or not, I would like to, teachers have the access to that and to be able to know what that looks like. Also, I believe Member Perez and I have both asked if we can add quarantine numbers to the dashboard, and I haven't gotten a clear answer on that. So I'd like to have that added, even if it's just a weekly thing, if it's too much to do on a daily basis, even though other, the other school districts are doing that, I'd like to officially ask that. And then I'd like to ask some questions about e-learning. Mr. Porter, are we able to offer e-learning at this time? Because I've had a lot of parents contact me who said that they're concerned that at this point, the mask mandate might not, you know, mitigate the spread, and are really, 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 you know, asking for e-learning. Legally, is that something we're able to do?
So you'll recall that last year, when this pandemic was hitting, there was an option for e-learning, and there was a state order that gave us cover from the count that would normally dictate how much money we get. So our funding is based in part of how many children are in seats in the school. With e-learning, they're not physically in the school, so they wouldn't count apps and some sort of protection from the state. So the directive from the state is that we need, if we want the funding that would normally come from children being in classes, we have to, they have to be in brick and mortar classes. And staff could further answer that question, but that's basically the situation.
Okay. And I also just wanted to clarify for Member Han. When I was talking about an incentive, it was just for our staff members, not for our community. And to speak of Orange County, so often how well they're doing, they have offered a $200 incentive to their teacher and staff members to mitigate. And we also heard Dr. Holt say that's one of the biggest influencers as far as this COVID spread is concerned. And then, so I just also wanted to say, in this motion, what would be different as well? We'd be mandating it for our staff members and adults. That would be different than what we have currently. And I would just like to also say that I would like to revisit it in 30 days, not for it to be a hard stop. And I don't know if I have to amend the motion to do that, but I would like 30 days as needed and then to revisit it after 30 days as opposed to it just ending. And I don't know what I have to do in regards for that. Is there something I need to do, Mr. Porter?
So you're doing this under your emergency rulemaking powers, which allows an emergency rule to be in effect for up to 90 days. The motion is for 30 days. At the end of 30 days, you would have to look to see if the emergency still existed before you could rely on emergency rulemaking. If at that time, the emergency didn't exist but you wanted to pursue it, the best course would be to do normal rulemaking and follow that process for policies. So I think if that's the will of the board, we'll make sure that we can do that legally.
And I just want to say that, you know, I personally, since we've all kind of shared our personal feelings on this, feel like, you know, this comes down to two separate issues. There's the issues of just protecting our students, our most vulnerable, especially our 12 and under group who don't have access to the vaccination, but all of our students and our staff members. You know, the decisions that we make here aren't lightly made. And I think all of us have dedicated or shown that we want to protect our schools and keep them safe. I think the other issue is that, you know, with this constant state overreach, you know, and the state of Florida and the Department of Education trying to make a decision about whether or not we have the right to keep our district safe and make local decisions is concerning. And honestly, I think it's an attack on democracy and one that we have to be very careful of. You know, our governor is very, very, very specific about his ability on the state level to have state rule and not have to follow the guidelines on the federal level. And he should extend, and our Board of Education should extend the same rights to us as a district. We've all been elected by the community members to represent them, to make decisions. And I think it's very important that we have the freedom to do so. So I just want to go on record for saying that. I appreciate all of your answers, and I will allow the discussion to continue.
Yes. Oh, sorry. Superintendent Davis, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, the chair. I want to go ahead and ask Pablo or Mr. Bunkley to go ahead and put the dashboard up. For the quest of the board, that information is live as of now. You'll see the quarantine information along with the percentage and number of individuals that it accounts for. When you see it, you will see 139,000 as a total population. That's inclusive of not only district-managed schools but charter schools as well. It's not only inclusive of students, but it's also inclusive of employees. And it gives the overall percentage and the number of quarantines. They'll get it up when they get a chance. But as it relates to e-learning, it's just the complexities that we offered last year. It's very hard to do. Our two solutions, we continue to educate our parents about what Hillsborough Virtual K-12 offers and how that is a viable option to be able to help our children who may need to have a different learning solution. And we open that window for a number of days for our parents to be able to select that, understanding where the variant was and is within our community. As it relates to small group instruction, it's a necessity. It is a necessity to be able to help children, to be able to move them, to be able to help them not only with skills and strategies but accelerate learning along the way. We understand that we're in a very difficult situations, and some of our classrooms, for the most part, transitioned from being in graveyard rows when we were taught to be able to turn and transition to a small group, to be able to have that interaction, to be able to defend and be able to have conversations and think pairs share about the work every single day, which continues, as we understand, as our foundational strategy to be able to move the needle educationally, which our children desperately need. And as it relates to accessibility to information, all of our principals have the information related to those who have opted out. That information has been pushed to our teachers. We did put it in EdConnect as of Monday. However, when the special board meeting was called as Monday, we wanted for that to be a pause today. And after the decision, we'll determine whether or not we have to release that back in EdConnect. But we have it ready and live. We just haven't turned it on because we really wanted to be able to have the conversation today and so they can make informed decisions. But once again, here's the dashboard. As you can see, it talks about the total number of reported cases, the total number of individuals impacted. That would be related to the number of those who have positive and also quarantined, for transparency. And then being able to link the overall percentage of impact. And we give a definition on the left side to identify what that actually means for the interaction along with the number of district populations. Yeah, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. That is very helpful. If I can just make a few comments and then we'll go back into the queue, it looks like, for second board member comments. I think that it's pretty clear. I think that there's two areas that we all can agree on, and probably more than that with utmost respect. We all can agree that we want our kids in school. We know that. We know the suicide rate, the mental health breakdown, the learning loss. So we all agree on that. Secondly, we all agree that we want our teachers and our staff and our children to be safe. And period. I mean, that's our oath in office. I know that Member Snively very much recognized that we are elected officials, and one of our oaths, according to the Florida School Board Association, the number one thing is the priority is the self, the safety and welfare of children. That's what school board members, that's their priority. I take it very seriously, and that's all I need to know. So when I put down that I wanted the emergency, or I think we called it a special call, board meeting, I only thought of one thing. Are we doing everything for the safety and welfare of our children? Now, what we do agree on, I think every one of the board members, this is the third one, quarantining is at a hand. 10,000 cases, I would say by next week, if we continue, we will see perhaps a double. What will stop the spread? Now, I understand we can give $100 stipends to teachers and to students' families, perhaps that will mitigate it, as Orange County did. Understand that we can go ahead and open up more vaccine centers, which we should. But what we can't sustain is what I'm going to say right now. We cannot sustain any longer the plethora of our children who are being quarantined, they are not getting an education. Two weeks out of a month is not an education. And if that continues for three more months, how are we to expect, as school board members, elected officials, staff, Superintendent Davis, how are we to expect that our children will get the mental, the social, the academic quality education? It ain't happening. So we can't sustain this. So thank you, board members, for bringing out so clearly the quarantine conundrums because we have to fix that somehow. But I don't think we can fix anything until we find a unified way to prevent this virus from spreading. And if it's only 30 days, and then we relook at it, as Member Vaughn said, we reevaluate, which is always a good system to have. If that does prevent a growing amount of sickness, hopefully not any deaths, then I think it's more than worth it. Just a mask. And I don't think of politics at all to Member Combs' point. I only think about my grandchildren. I think about District 5 children that don't have access to healthcare. I think about Plant City, Member Snively's area, that we have migrants out in Wyomama, which is Member Han's territory. That's hard. Excuse me. I have two board members. Both of those board members, by the way, Members Snively, Member Han, they're in touch with their population. But you know what? Migrants are not going to- There's a lot of problems that they have not access to healthcare. It ain't happening. So what are we going to do? We going to have the mitigating virus spread to the least likely populations to help fortify themselves, prevent them from getting this virus? So, okay, we know the answer. That's why many of us are in office. We want to be there for our high-needs populations. We want to be the voice. We want to be, as Superintendent has done, give them the resources that they need for equity. So, okay, moving forward, I don't find it sustainable, the way that we're going forward. To me, it's at a hand. I also think the principals, and I also went to the principals. In fact, this morning, I was at Hillsborough. They are having classes, 35, Plant High School, 30, 35, 38, because we can't get teachers. They're sick. And we can't get food service. I volunteered to help with the cafeteria. I know the board members will probably do the same. We can't get custodians. They're sick. The bus drivers, I know the pay, but they're also, a lot of them are getting sick. So what are we going to do? Are we going to go ahead and start doing this every other week? Got growing quarantines? Or are we going to say, hey, man, let's do something within our power as elected officials to mitigate the spread with the high hopes, just like last year. It will reduce the amount of quarantines and up the ante for students' successful learning. And last, and I think every one of us board members, we did this oath-taking, and we take it very seriously. And I'm proud of that. And I'm a rule follower. I'm a law-abiding citizen. And I taught my family, my son and grandchildren, as best as they can learn because they're still young, to be civil students, to be society, folks that can help other people become stronger and better. But I will take note, and I believe Member Perez read this, we have the Governor DeSantis, who has two or three kids, I can't remember my kids, a very loving father, no doubt. But he has made a ruling with the DOE that has absolutely tied our hands fiduciarily with state monies, the grant and all that. But in the face of a law, the American Rescue Plan is S or 3, I think is what we say. We don't have that money. It's been beyond 30 days. And we don't have S or 2 money. So how is that elected official any better than us elected officials? Because we're just trying to do our job. But we don't even get the money that was supposed to be given to us to do our job. And yes, oh, they're going to take away everything, and they say it's not going to affect student learning. We're not going to affect the students. I heard that this morning. Well, what do you think when you take away monies from the transformation schools, the high-need schools? What do you think is going to happen to those students? What do you think's going to happen to the motivation of teachers when you take away that stipend, that extra stipend that puts them in those tougher schools? It's going to affect the kids. And all I got to say, folks, is if we're just asking for a 30-day protective measure, isn't that the least we can do for our children? Isn't that, if it saves one life, 10 hospitalizations, isn't that the least that we can do? And then, Superintendent Davis, we know that you have the courage- Oh, my time's up. By five minutes. Okay. We know that you have the courage, the endurance, and the enthusiasm, and the, let's just say, the moral compass to help us as board members lead the charge, should we vote in a way that mirrors a mask mandate for 30 days. We know that you're on this, and we appreciate that. So I'm going to say that, and I'm sorry, board members. You know, you keep me shut up for so long. This is what happens. Sorry. Here we go. Member Perez, you're next, and then Member Han.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Governor's Executive Order Number 21175. The second, whereas it says, "The Florida's Department of Education ordered schools to be open for in-person instruction for five days per week to ensure the continued well-being of students and families." And I'm going to assume that he had in mind the well-being of our Black and Latino families as well in the middle of a pandemic. Mr. Porter, Latuwa and Broward Counties, was the requirement limited to 30 days?
I don't know the answer to that. I believe it was, and that's what other counties have been doing.
For the 30 days? There was a survey taken regarding to employees. As the chair spoke about employees, they're dropping like flies, and we don't have enough employees. When the district started, Superintendent, how many employees were we down in order to run this district?
Yes, ma'am. When we started school, we were close to 400 vacancies, and now we sit over 300 vacancies, but we're hiring every single day. And this is inclusive of instructional staff, support staff, and the major, greatest, while we have, you know, a little bit over 100 vacancies related to the instructional side for 240 schools, the biggest vacancy spot we have right now is our food and nutrition, to be able to recruit those and along with custodial staff, to be able to make certain that we have sufficient individuals to be able to provide the essentials within our school district. But we'll continue to make certain. We partner with vendors related to custodial staff and continue to recruit teachers every day.
So being down 338 employees is hurting this district right now.
Absolutely.
Okay. And when we have transportation out, how does that affect this district?
Through, Chair, in a major way. When we have transportation out and we have over between 80 and 90 vacancies with the bus drivers, we're having to put greater stressors on the current drivers that we have within the district. And those individuals are having to conduct double backs to go to a site. They come back and drop those individuals off at the school, then turn back, go back to be able to have a second wave to ensure that all of our students are getting there in on-time, in a peaceful manner. And it's a lot of stress. And that puts stress on our district as well because it builds upon schedules between elementary, middle, and high school, and it just becomes very complex. So we could be behind in those particular schedules, and those double backs really create hardships for our students, for our families. And we're looking at solutions, like here comes the bus. This could be a potential solution app where our parents would know when that bus gets into a one and a half, one-mile radius of that particular site. So it sends immediate indicators whether or not that bus is on time or it's late, and also to the school. So we have better communications so that our parents can be informed of where we are. And that's more of a safety issue and transparency issue as well.
Let me read this one more time. Whereas, last summer, at my direction, Florida's Department of Education ordered schools to be open for in-person instruction for five days per week to ensure the continued well-being of students and families. So being short bus drivers, being short employees, putting a stress on families, trying to make sure that their children are going to and getting on the bus, because a lot of parents leave for work before their students go to school, correct? So that stress of a parent being at work, not knowing if their student got on the bus, is that ensuring the continued well-being of students and families? Let me ask that question.
We're working every single day to make certain that families feel comfortable, and they select Hillsborough County public schools as their first solution. District-managed schools are their first solution. As it relates to being able to fill voids, historically, we've always had great voids, whether it be instructional, whether it be support staff voids. But we now, with the pandemic, it's just been exacerbated. So the recruitment efforts that we've had through our human resources, to be able to have job fairs, to be able to connect, to be able to recruit not only statewide, nationwide, we're not the only ones in the particular issue that are struggling with these hires. When I say that we have counties that are not as large as us, have over 150 bus drivers that are down. And, you know, us being at 80 and 90, I know it's not an attractive number, but it's one that really says that we've done a really good job to kind of start eliminating that gap so that our students can't have- gap so that our students can't have the necessary essentials every day.
So basically, instead of helping drain the pool, it seems like they've thrown alligators into the water instead. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Perez. Member Hahn?
Thank you, Member Gray. Well, Member Perez kind of teed me up for my comments.
Oh, teed her up.
Thank you. So I want to talk about vaccines. They are obviously one of the mitigating strategies. So, you know, Member Vaughn mentioned this earlier. I did understand we were just doing this for employees. I asked Dr. Holt about the county and the city and the mayor, because I wanted to get a sense of what others were doing. And I know that there are some mayors across the nation that are offering countywide incentives for individuals to get vaccinated. So perhaps I'd like to request for the next board meeting that we get some information on the ESER's funding that can be used specifically, because I know that this board has already committed to a plan for those dollars. And we've listed out what the spending will be on in very specific ways. So I'd like to know what we will have to forfeit spending on to be able to do the incentive, and maybe it can even be on the agenda. I'm not sure. But I just think it's important, given that we are in a, you know, a very fragile fiscal state right now, that it's not just, I just don't need the amount that it will cost, but I need to know the impact on our current fiscal plan to make sure that everything we do, every dollar we spend, we are staying on track to become fiscally healthy. Not saying that that is more important than anything else. I'm just saying that needs to be a consideration during the discussion around specifically, specifically the vaccines and the incentives. So that when we, if we choose to put that in place, we're just making sure that, you know, we can afford that. So that would be my ask around that. Thank you, Member Vaughn, for bringing that up today. And then I also want to thank Member Washington and Member Perez around their comments and conversation around equity. Getting back to the specific agenda item or the item we're going to vote on, and the medical opt-out piece of that potential mandate. You know, my concern, like Member Washington and Member Perez and some other board members, is the, are our most vulnerable families. So currently, Ms. Brown, what is the percentage of our students on free and reduced lunch?
Approximately 62%.
So we have about 62% of our most vulnerable socioeconomic families on free and reduced lunch. And as Member Gray said, that, you know, you know, many of these folks may not have access to medical care, at least not the same medical care that we may have for our children, where we have an established doctor. And, you know, they may be going to clinics, seeing not the same doctor all the time. So my concern, as well as theirs, is when it comes to the medical opt-out, that, you know, they're struggling with consistent access to medical care. I know that one of the doctors today said, look, most kids are well-established with the doctor if they have medical issues. Well, not in our most vulnerable families, you know, they're not. And so I do want to make sure that, you know, how are we going to help them get that access if they don't have the money for a co-pay or to get a medical referral? How are they going to be helped financially? Are we going to reimburse for transportation costs for these families? And are we going to reimburse for time off from work? Because if we're talking about being equitable, and, you know, I mean, this is a concern, because these students, they, many of them have, you know, I mean, these are medical issues. And so I am concerned, and especially if we approve this tonight, I'm not sure what the implementation, is it tomorrow? So all these families have to stay home if they can't, you know? So I'd like more elaboration on that. But also, you know, a question to Ms. Barano. What is the current opt-out percentage in our district? How many families are currently opting out in our district?
Right now, there's 28, there's around 28,000 students that have opted out through the formal documentation. Unless, I'm going to be very clear, though, there are a number of our students, our families, who have not completed that documentation. They feel that that documentation is not needed due to the executive order. And, but we're asking parents to fill it out so we can just have confirmation that they have made that stance.
So if we have approximately 80% of students who are parents who are opting in for masks, I know that there are parents also that opted out. But they are still sending their child to school in a mask because they want their child to have the option to wear, if during the day they do get a headache, or, you know, they are having an issue, that they can take off their mask, or if the student feels like, look, I'm further enough away, I can take off my mask. So, you know, even though we have parents who have opted out, what did you say, 26,000 that have opted out, some of them are still sending their children to school in masks because they want that, they want that option for their student during the day. So, you know, I am concerned about that. Also, I know there were some comments around the ability for teachers. Some of my constituents are saying teachers are not allowed to remind students to put their mask back on or to move it up, or, you know? And I just want to get some clarity around that. If a student, you know, if a teacher, even if it's a broad reminder and not calling a student out and saying, hey, everybody, this might be a good time to make sure your mask is on right, we're moving into small group so that you're not targeting certain students. So are you directing teachers to absolutely not correct, or, you know, provide those types of gentle reminders?
Yes, Madam Chair. We want our teachers, for those who, to have reminders throughout the day, but not consistently to a point where every single day, Addison, put on your mask. Addison, what are you doing? Addison, you know, take, make sure you're doing X, Y, and Z with your mask. We want to continue to have general reminders so that students, A, know how to wear the mask properly, and B, they are interacting in a way that, through their wishes of their parents. So there's a fine line for us to determine whether or not we are identifying through harassment, intimidating through our mask requirements. But we are not in any way, shape, or form trying to segregate, separate any of our students and make them feel belittled for any selection that they make. But we're open to being able to make certain, we're caregivers. So being able to help our children, make sound decisions, and help them get right related to their, how they wear their mask, and how often. We always have those general reminders to be able to implement it.
I appreciate that. And could you respond to my questions around access to medical care, transportation to the doctors, and time off of work for our most vulnerable families that may desperately need to opt out due to medical conditions? And the timeline around that, if this, in fact, is passed tonight?
Yes, Madam Chair, we're very open and honest. We just don't have the money right now to be able to reimburse. The only way that we could reimburse is that we'd have to go back to look at ESER funds and see if they're eligible to be able to do so due to, due to the pandemic and the new Delta variant. With that said, we've spent the majority of the accessible money, funds that we've received and drawn down from federal dollars from ESER I to ESER II. We have, we're still waiting on ESER III APR funding to be able to come to our district. This is where we may be able to take on some innovative solutions to be able to help our students. There are additional medical assistance out there that we can provide and connect with parents who may need and qualify based on their, you know, their current economic status, that we can link with our parents. But being able to reimburse for potential, you know, days off or being able for transportation, we don't have the funds to do so. We'd have to leverage APR ESER 3s to be able to make that a reality.
Okay, thank you. I'll get back in the queue. I just have another question on safety. So thank you, appreciate it.
Board members, we're trying to wind this up. And I understand Member Hahn has another question and Member Perez. So let's go ahead through the queue, and then final thoughts from perhaps all of us, and then we'll get on with the mission at hand. Member Combs?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out, as we were sitting here in the last few hours, Miami Dade, the fourth-largest county in the United States of America, also mandated masks. So as far as we are being the only ones who are breaking the law, you are now looking at the fourth-largest county in the country, the sixth-largest county as far as Broward, and Hillsborough County, as well as Alachua. So I want to remind everybody of that. And when we talk about breaking the law, and we talk about millions and millions of ESER dollars that we're still waiting for, let's talk about that, you know? Because it is really, that is really legally obligated to us in order to function. I am really just a data-driven person. When you look at Broward versus Hillsborough staff with masks, a 260% increase, and that was due to pre-planning, open houses. So more staff are being impacted because of no use of masks. Hospitals, as we heard, 250% increase of hospital rates right now. We are at the peak of COVID more than any other time in the last two years. This is the peak of Hillsborough County. 80% of private schools, the top private schools in Hillsborough County, have a 30-day or longer mask mandate. I want to really look at the lunch mitigation, what we can do to work on that. And Ms. Barano, you have worked so incredibly hard. I want to say that I deeply appreciate that. I want to continue to really look at quarantining students and how we can decrease that. Allowing students to bring that positive case for COVID, to confirm those cases. Also, making sure that we're tracking not just quarantine, but kids, our students, are they actually getting COVID once they're quarantined? So I think those are the kinds of things, when I say 30 days, I really want to track those things. I really want to look at those things. Because my goal is not for students to have masks for the entire year. I just want to make that clear. That is really my goal. And finally, when we talk about medical exemptions, I feel that any child who had an exemption last year should receive that. We also should look at students with IEPs and who need that. We don't need to have them have a medical form. If they have an IEP or a 504 plan, I would imagine that would be natural to take care of that. We cannot wait. Last year, at the end of the year, we had 33,625 students quarantined the entire year. Day seven, we have 10,384 students. If we continue to go with this track, one week from now, our entire district will be closed down. And who will suffer the most is our children. So we need to look at this not so short-sighted and not so political, but really look at what's best for kids and how can we keep our children at school? And most importantly, I think we have to really thank our faculty, our staff. I had a teacher text me yesterday and tell me that she did not get a break. She had to cover two classes. She had to do extra duty. I mean, our bus drivers are doing double duty. Let's keep these schools open. Let's decrease. And let's see. You know, if we see 30 days from now, we are still in the same trajectory, then we can reevaluate. But at this point, I think we must, you know, as a community, really look at someone calling for an ambulance right now. It might not be for COVID, or someone not being able to go to the hospital, who doesn't want to wait in the ER for three hours. We need to really look at just the overall, the health of our community, and really the long-term impact of children. Because I know, if I am on the Council of Great City Schools, the vast majority of students around this country have not been to school. I feel so fortunate that my children were able to go to school last year. And although my daughter missed almost nine weeks of school and was never tested positive, I am so happy that she can be at school today. She is vaccinated. She told me, I just want to be at school, Mom. I don't want to wear the mask, but I'll wear the mask as long as I maybe can have a homecoming. See, that's what kids are looking at. So we really need to look at the big picture.
Thank you, Member Combs. And board members, I know you have a lot of questions for Superintendent Davis, and possibly some suggestions, which I think were pretty well articulated. So we're going to go ahead and finish up. Final thoughts, but Member Snively, you haven't made your second thought or third. So let's go ahead. And Member Washington, and then Member Hahn, Member Perez, and Member Vaughn. And then let's try to go ahead and get going. Go ahead. Uh, Member Snively, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief, because I can see where this conversation is going, unfortunately. But I feel like I need to speak for some of the parents, especially many of them who made it out here today to the school board office and spoke very passionately about freedom, liberty, their ability as parents to decide what is right for their students, and not necessarily a board of education in Hillsborough County to decide what is right for their students. And they also spoke about the Parent Bill of Rights and having the ability to make those choices and to do what's right, what they feel is right, what they believe is right for their students. And it feels a little bit déjà vu, because we kind of went through this last summer, right before we reopened. And we were here negotiating whether we should reopen or not, and trying to bend the rules a little bit to make it work for our school district. And then we got our hand slapped again by the Department of Education. I just believe that that's probably what's going to happen again, honestly. I see if this passes today with a 30-day mask rule with medical opt-out, in my opinion, what's going to happen is we're going to be, feel the repercussions from the Department of Education. Do we all, you know, agree with everything that's been pushed down towards, to our school board level? Not necessarily, but the, but there is an executive order that exists. And it's been made very clear. And just because Miami Dade jumped off of a cliff doesn't mean we have to jump off a cliff with them. Okay? That's, don't we all tell that to our children when they're learning? Just because so-and-so did something doesn't mean that you have to do it too. So in my opinion, I think we're just going to go down this road for, just to get our hand slapped again, and possibly lose funding, which we can't afford to do. We can't afford, you said it yourself, Superintendent, we can't afford to lose one penny over this funding for our students' education. I believe that we could be better with our mitigation practices in school every day when it comes to social distancing, hand sanitizing, cleansing. I know that those are not being really strictly followed every single day in every classroom, but we should encourage our students and our faculty to do that. Because when we can do that, then perhaps we can avoid having to feel like we have to also wear a mask at school to protect our children. Because there are a lot of other factors that help reduce the spread. It's not just a mask. There's other things that we can do to help stop the spread of that. So the Department of Health ruling, 64DER21-12, says, "Students may wear masks or facial coverings as a mitigation measure. However, the school must allow for a parent or legal guardian of the student to opt out of the student from wearing a face covering or mask." It doesn't say a parent with medical requirement or medical documentation. It says a parent or legal guardian of the student, not the doctor of a parent of a legal guardian or student. So I think that we're going down a slippery slope. And I'm sorry to say that I can't, I just can't support going against the executive order when there are other things that we can do, whether it's mitigation practices at the school sites, whether it's reevaluating the way we quarantine, whether it's partnering with the Department of Health to get our kids vaccinated, to get our kids tested, rapid-tested. We could be doing so many other things to keep our kids in school rather than forcing them to wear a mask. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Members Snively. Member Washington?
Thank you. I got a quick question. Mr. Farkas and Ms. Brown, do you ever remember beginning or opening of a school year? We never had positions filled. That's right. We never had all the positions filled. So this is truly nothing new not to have. We may have had a few more now. But normally, we have about 200 or some positions that we don't field, and bus drivers, nutritional personnel. So this is nothing new. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Also, okay, so let's get to the elephant now. So, Sue, okay, we got to understand this. So what happens if we do vote on the 30 days? Okay? Because that's something different. What happens if a parent decides he or she does not want that kid to wear a mask?
Yes, ma'am. It's a good question. It's one of the questions I was going to pose and have discussions about. Because, you know, last year, what we did, when we mandated a mask, we openly, the first time, you know, if Addison didn't wear a mask, the first time in the conversation, we asked Madison to put, Addison to put his mask on. The second time that Addison didn't have his mask on, then we contacted the parent. And the third time, we found a different learning solution that may be better for Addison to be able to participate in. The issue becomes is that we had e-learning. This year, we don't have e- This year, we don't have e-learning just because of all the complexities that we learned last year in 2021. In Hillsborough Virtual, we cannot transition students at this particular time because classes have already started. So, you know, from our side, we're going to have to figure out where, you know, how far you want us to go and related to this. We've got to have expectations. If we mandate it, they have to wear it. We're going to have to continue actively engage our parents to make certain they understand the severity of it. And, you know, and openly, what we did last year is after we contacted the parent, then the next time, we asked the parent to come get, we asked the parent to come get that learner. And that's something we don't want to get in the business of doing, but we couldn't have, you know, a child disrupting the expectations that we established last year.
Okay, so that puts us, in other words, we are kind of like moving words around in this case because we can't, we don't ever want to penalize a kid and keep them out of school. So really, there is nothing in essence that we can actually do if a kid, if a parent, because the parent said, "Well, I don't want my kid wearing no mask," then what? We just...
It becomes very difficult, you know, related to, do we tie that to the dress code or our code of student conduct, then we get into a part where we're discipling kids? But, I mean, those are all conversations. I look for feedback from the board, and we'll have to work with our staff to be in our principles and make informed decisions. It becomes, it becomes a very complex implementation plan in that process. However, we will do everything we can, as we did last year, as we launched it in the 2021 school year. And if we get to a part where we have those very, you know, those barriers for parents, which we had very few last year, then we'll be able to engage them on an individual basis.
Do we, from recalling, do you have, do you recall having a lot of people that opt out like they're not?
No, sir. The majority, we had very few students that used the physical, psychological medical exemption last year. Everyone else pretty much complied with the expectation. Not only did we have that, you know, they complied, our students, but our faculty as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And there's always other districts. You can see that other districts will be following suit. So, Member Han?
Thank you. So last year, we, when we put the mask mandate in place that Member Combs is suggesting for today, we did commit to that. We agreed if we got to a certain percentage rate in the community that we would lift that mandate. So as Member Combs has said, she doesn't want to be tied to an all-year mask mandate. But nobody who is supporting or have heard words of support for this motion has mentioned that, well, if we get to this specific rate of transmission in the community. And so I'd be curious after to hear about, you know, you know what you're committing to, is all that I'm saying to the other members. Because this is a slippery slope, and we did at least commit to a specific rate of transmission. So to move on though, Mr. Superintendent, oh, first, Ms. Morano, what is the current? I know that we currently have, what is it, 1,840 cases, positive cases of COVID. How many of those cases are for children who never came on the first day of school? Because it's my understanding that that number includes parents who reported their child as positive and they, before the first day of school.
So the numbers that you've been given do include students who were reported as positive or reported as exposed before the first day of school. The dashboard, however, only reflects positive cases since August 10th, with the exception of a few that occurred during open house.
So is 1,840 reflective of kids post the first day of school?
If you're referring, ma'am, if you're referring to the dashboard data on the school district website, that number, the majority, the vast majority, except for maybe four or five, are students after August 10th. That came on campus.
While I ask my other questions, can somebody look that number up on the dashboard? Because I don't want to spend my time looking it up, just to know if it is 1,840 or more or less. And so, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, ma'am.
So what is your recommendation? Do you recommend that we stick with the current mask policy that is an opt-out? Or do you recommend the current motion that is on the dais right now?
Yes, ma'am, through the chair. Due to the fact that the executive order is currently in place and it is law, my recommendation is to continue with the mask mandate with the opportunity for individuals to opt out.
To opt out as it, as it stands?
As it sits today.
Okay. So my other concern is, again, the quarantine data. I'd like us to be able to clean that data up.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I don't think 10,000-plus quarantined students are quarantined under your protocols. And they're missing out on instruction. And this is, you know, again, what, doesn't matter how you feel about masks. This is moving forward. Whatever happens, that is a concern, that should be a concern for everybody. The other thing is, I'm really, I'm concerned for student safety in a different regard than anything we've discussed tonight, and then I'll end my comments. But it's around photos of, photos that are being taken in schools. So currently, we have individuals that are taking photos of students in classrooms, masked and unmasked. They're sharing them with whoever it is out in the community. And then those photos are ended up on Facebook. People have texted me those photos saying, "Hey, I just want you to see who's unmasked, who's masked." You know, I have a lot of concerns about that. Because, one, you know, we should, these are children. We should all be respectful of their privacy. And photos should not be shared in an attempt to bully or call students out or families or parents. That's dangerous waters, you know? It's not healthy for our community. And so I, you know, and I worry about the safety of these students outside of school. You know, what's happening when they step off that school bus? Are they unsafe? Are they being bullied or threatened, you know, when their parents or their schools are not there to protect them? So this is my request, to help hopefully try and mitigate any of that from continuing. Because it really hurts my heart to think that there might be a six-year-old student out there who, you know, leaves school and their picture has been shared now and they're being targeted. So I would like to request that you issue a moratorium on any photos taken inside our school buildings, unless it's by your personal communications team, who can then blur out or do something with faces. And that includes board members. I don't, I would like to sincerely request, so that some of this community targeting can be mitigated, that we are no longer, and it's a sad place that we have to do this, a sad place that we are at, where we have to police this thing. Because photos are usually some ways that we celebrate what's happening in schools, right? We all do it. Our teachers do it. They, especially, you know, our younger kids, they want to share with parents who are at work, "Oh, look how great your child's doing." And those are all wonderful celebrations and really wonderful uses of photographs and technology. But to see how it's being abused, and it is concerning to me. So if we could maybe for, you know, the next 30 days or however your staff sees fit, have this moratorium just until things kind of calm down in our schools, in our community. I would greatly appreciate your consideration on that. You know, I've got a few more seconds. And so much, you know, much like, everybody here is, look, I appreciate your comments. I respect, I respect your positions. And I know we're all here for the right reasons. But I do have concerns after seeing, and I'm going to wrap up and then I won't get back in the queue. So just give me 10 more seconds. I, you know, I do want to see us really focus on mitigating strategies because I think we need to do better around that, around our data, because I think it is projecting, you know, a different picture than what's happening. And I am very concerned about the implications of going against the state governor's mandates around this. I do think that, one, the policy that we have in place is a good policy, but we need to clean up a lot of the things around it to make sure that, one, again, you know, and I mentioned, getting individuals into schools, hiring individuals with Esters money to alleviate the stress off of our principals and school staff, you know. And, you know, tightening up the quarantine protocols would be greatly helpful. And, you know, additionally, look, at the end of the day, our parents are very vocal about what they want for their child. I have children, many of us have children, grandchildren. And, you know, we know what's best for our children, not a government, and I feel strongly about that. I don't, I want to make decisions around health for my children. And I understand everybody's reasoning around that. But, you know, I do, I do think that, you know, that is a very important consideration. So, you know, it's, I do, I will support the current policy that's in place and hope that you and your staff can work to strengthen some of the mitigation strategies and communication and protocols so that we can make sure that, you know, we keep as many students in school as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gray, for the extra time. I appreciate it. I will not get back in the queue.
Getting just like me, and, oh my goodness, yeah. Superintendent Davis, you have a lot to work on. We're going to have final thoughts, and that means like right through, and then we're going to vote. And Superintendent Davis, did you want to say something at this time?
Yes, ma'am. So, and I want this community to know, this board to know, that why I stand by the original recommendation is because openly, there's law. And for me, in my particular, you know, core values, I just can't break him. Not that I don't care where we are as a current community, as a, you know, where we are related to COVID, has to be a part of the process that we protect it. So, but once again, we'll put the strategies in place as the board wishes. The issue is, is that you're going to have to allow us to work through it with our staff for the next 48 hours between Thursday and Friday. Because, you know, we're going, well, we'll make this announcement, and we'll make sure we get that, you know, any particular, whatever side it may be, we'll make any particular announcement maybe. It takes time for that implementation to be at full scale. So we'll do everything that we can to make it a reality, to determine on way this ends.
And Superintendent Davis, we're not here to prejudge or judge you at this time. We're just all getting excruciatingly, you know, involved with this decision. So you'll work it out, you and your staff. And, Member Perez, you had a question or a final thought?
Yeah, a couple of questions. So like I tell my children, not complaining, just explaining. So we are at 22% COVID, you know, in this community. Last year, when it was at 5%, is, you know, at 7% is when we, you know, would put things in place. At 22%, it's high. So we have children sitting shoulder to shoulder in our lunchrooms. And in our lunchrooms, they take off their masks to eat. I have a couple of community members who have called me, said their kids are afraid to even eat lunch because they're sitting so close to each other. So if, and I've called you regarding this. So if you have mitigation strategies, why weren't they not implemented prior to our numbers being 10,000 in quarantine?
Yes, ma'am, through the chair. We have mitigation strategies for our common areas, for our lunchrooms, related to our classrooms, remove equipment, remove materials, remove furniture so we can have that social distance where we can. I've been clear from day one related to two areas that we struggle to be able to social distance. The first one is on the bus. Very hard and complex to be able to social distance. It's almost impossible. We try to do it where our buses hold through, you know, for some of our little ones. Some of our 77-capacity buses, we can put three per seat. We've been putting two. And as you get into a lunchroom, it's about space. Some of our schools are so old, our lunchroom capacity is so little. So being able to, to social distance, to have sufficient time as it's regulated from federal guidance is hard to do. In addition to that, being able to have proper coverage. When we talk about healthy schools and food nutrition, we're having a hard time for supervision to make certain we have staff to serve food to our students. And in addition, to be able to have and hire support staff to be able to supervise while they're in lunch, as the lunch is a time that's contractually where teachers have 30 minutes to be able to have their time, to let their hair down, run errands, eat their lunch, those are all things they need to do. The issue is, is being able to have finances, funds, and people to be able to come in, to be able to expand, to go to a multipurpose room, to be able to go to a particular auditorium, to be able to go outside with supervision, to be able to use and leverage a classroom where needed. So those are things we're looking at, how we could use and potentially leverage ESSER funding. And I say APR 3, because right now, we just don't have the money to make that a reality. So those are the two that we've been very transparent for the last 18 months. It's hard to get it done. School and education wasn't built to social distance. But we'll do everything we can to be able to help in that process.
So those two areas are not going to happen within the 48 hours?
It's, no, ma'am. I'm just being very honest with you.
And this question is, you know, so with our children who had their medical notices from last year, will they be able to use them this year?
Yes, ma'am, through the chair. If the decision is made, we'll be able to, schools hub those. We'll be able to potentially roll over. And the biggest thing we'll have to do is figure out how we have transitions from a fifth grader to sixth grade, from an eighth grader to ninth grade, as those individuals will be going to a different school. So we'll make certain that we make that identification so that students can be, you know, disruption-free and continue that process.
Thank you. Whoops. Okay, I'll get it there. Thank you, Member Perez. And I know Member Vaughn wants to do an addition. Mr. Porter, can you help Member Vaughn through this? Should she need a little bit of assistance?
Member Vaughn wants to say.
Go ahead. Member Vaughn?
Thank you. I appreciate it. I know we're anxious to get on the vote and see where this leads. I just would like to offer an amendment to allow the review of this in 30 days to see if we need to continue this for another 30 days.
So that's an amendment that requires a second and then a vote on the amendment. So if you're in favor of reviewing this in 30 days, someone to second it. There's no second, it dies. Okay, there's no second. That doesn't preclude you from looking at this in 30 days, but it just doesn't require it. So you have the main motion on the floor, and when you're ready, Madam Chair, we can repeat it.
Let's repeat the motion.
So this is the motion on the floor, made by Member Combs. Based on the latest data on the impact of COVID on Hillsborough County public schools, there is an immediate danger to the public health, safety, and welfare, excuse me. Therefore, Member Combs moves that we reinstate the facial covering requirement found in the district reopening plan for the 2021 school year, previously approved by the state, for all students, teachers, and staff of Hillsborough County Public Schools for 30 days, starting tomorrow, August 19th. And you'll recall that Ms. Brown provided you the opt-out form that will be made part of the record. That's the medical opt-out. The superintendent has committed that those parents who opted out last year will automatically be opted out, which I think furthers the compliance with the state rule that allows parents to opt out. So again, our position, if this passes, will be we're in compliance with the regulation because we are allowing for an opt-out. The rule does not preclude or prohibit requiring a medical update. I'll remind you again, the state has rejected that argument that I just made. And they, there's a risk that they will find us in noncompliance and the district will suffer penalties. But that's where the motion is, and that's going to be our legal position if the motion passes.
Okay. Please vote when your lights are on to the motion at hand. Yes or no? Okay, the motion carries, Member Washington, Member Vaughn, Member Perez, Member Gray, Member Combs dissenting, Member Snively, and Member Han. Thank you, Board members, for all of your great questions, your thorough recommendations. And by the way, you know, even though one succeeds or one doesn't succeed, we have learned a lot, the Superintendent Davis and Member, Ms. Morano, Ms. Brown, the folks in the medical team, nothing has been wasted during this meeting, nothing. So we're all going to go ahead. We're going to, this quarantine, and I thank you, Members Snively and Member Han, and the rest of you for bringing out this quarantine, the nightmare, so we can hope to get better on that. I hope I hear, see shaking of the heads, but maybe we'll get there later. Okay, Board members, done. Okay, Board members, done.